All right, well, I guess we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you, everybody, for joining. I have a printed agenda around here somewhere. Give me a second. Been a very long workday already. There we go. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Michael throw the flag up. And I've learned my lesson, Joe. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Joe, for helping. All right, can we get a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Mr. Kelly, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. All right, all those in favor, we're gonna do a quick roll call and then I'll go through the standard stuff. Bernstein, is he a sto?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes, please.
Walzki?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if Peter joined us. Peter, Cher? All right, well, that passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, everybody, for joining. It's been just a really rough week and I think we all understand that. So, thank you for joining our virtual meeting. This meeting is being held conducted, being conducted pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order 7B. Per that order, the meeting is being recorded. It'll be available linked off of our Board of Education website as well as, I believe, on our YouTube channel. The agenda for tonight's meeting is at our Board Doc site. You can get there by going to GreenwichSchools.org, clicking on the Board of Education, scrolling down and clicking on the Meetings box. Once in Board Docs, you'll see tonight's meeting. You can click there to access the agenda. It's a special meeting, a special business meeting of the Board of Education. We are taking public comments. We've got, I believe, nine speakers signed up for that tonight. In addition, members of the community can certainly send an email to all Board of Ed members by sending an email to a single address. That is BoardofEdMembers@Greenwich.K12.CT.us. The meeting tonight is going to consist of a discuss discussion between the, between and among the board, the superintendent and her team. I'd ask everybody to stay muted when, when they're not speaking. And unless I say your name, please state your name each time you're talking. I'll be using the raise the hand functions so we can call in people in turn. I've asked that board members try to keep their comments concise. As usual, we have a very full agenda with much going on. And for all voting, we'll be doing that via roll call. Appreciate all of that. All right, can we get a motion on the consent agenda?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Downey. All right, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Bernstein is a yes sto?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Walzki?
Yes, yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And I don't see Peter, but I'll ask again. Mr. Cher? All right, that passes seven zero. Thank you very much. All right, so next up is our public hearing. First, we will start with our GHS student government. Mark and Meredith, are you with us?
Hello? All right, okay. Hello to all the members of the board and the people observing the meeting tonight. My name is Meredith Blanchard and I'm the GHS Senior Class President. I wanted to thank you all again for graciously devoting time to student voices at each meeting. This week marks the return from February break and we have some updates on how things are doing at the high school. First, Tuesday was the first time in several weeks that the Greenwich cohort got to go in person to school. This was due to several factors out of the control of the school, like snow days and holidays. But it did reveal a shortcoming of the hybrid model. However, I do know that the GHS administration is monitoring the number of days that each cohort misses in case there's a need to adjust the calendar in the future. In student government news, we recently had a successful gratitude gram program where students could send a message of appreciation to friends and faculty in the spirit of Valentine's Day. It was a tremendous success with nearly 300 messages sent. Each and everyone was kind spirited and definitely brought smiles and joy over the break. Recently, our VP of Communications, Lily, sent out another edition of the Student Government Newsletter to keep students updated and included a Google form for student feedback. That way, we can get feedback from any student in the whole school rather than just from representatives. Now more people can have their voices heard in our school community. Lastly, special events like prom and graduation are still pending approval from the Health Department before we can get the green light. It's difficult when all we want to do is come up with a plan of action. Well, we also do not know what the status of the pandemic will be in May and June. Nevertheless, we still hope to do at least something to facilitate school community bonding. We have also come up with a graduation speaker to whom we will be reaching out to see if she would be willing to speak. So hopefully, we'll have a few, we will have more information in a few weeks. Thank you all again for supporting our school community. I will now turn the mic over to our Student Body President, Mark Chen.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, Cabinet, and meeting attendees. My name is Mark Chen, Student Body President at Greenwich High School. Although we are just coming back from our week-long February break, which I must say was a much-needed one, we got straight to business with a student government mass meeting yesterday. Among other concerns and suggestions, the desire for asynchronous Wednesdays was undoubtedly a shared one among our representatives. Overwhelmingly, students are waiting in anticipation for more asynchronous Wednesdays after our very first one back in early December. Digital learning is very fatiguing, both mentally and visually, when running Google Meet classes back to back to back. Any break is a welcome one, and I'm sure both students and faculty alike would appreciate a less structured time to work according to their own pace and needs. I also wanted to take this opportunity to express my support for the Cardinal Stadium project. It was certainly reassuring to hear that the BET Budget Committee moved forward yesterday with approving the release of the $1.7 million. After authorization from the full BET, I hope we are still on track to have new bleachers by the time we graduate. I know this process has been long. I remember the bleachers were condemned back when I was a sophomore by then Superintendent Mayo. And it certainly has not been easy, but I think we are all glad that we are continuing to move forward in a timely manner. As challenging as this year has been, we are continuing to plan events that will spread joy and bring our school closer together. Meredith mentioned the recent digital gratitude gram exchange we did for Valentine's Day in lieu of the traditional candy grams, and it truly was a resounding success with kind messages sent and received by both students and faculty. We are also moving along with our mask fundraiser/competition where students from each grade submitted and voted on designs for masks to be ultimately available for purchase. Finally, we are excited to be planning a scavenger hunt of sorts for students, which would bring some fun and inspire a little friendly competition. And on top of all of this, we are also looking into making fun virtual challenges for students that could also serve as fundraisers. Needless to say, there's a lot planned and we are definitely excited for the future. Thank you for your time tonight. It is always a pleasure.
All right, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Meredith. Appreciate hearing from the students. I should note that by board policy, each speaker has three minutes. Next up is the GEA, Carol Sutton.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Jones, Cabinet, and members of the Greenwich Public School Community on Zoom. My name is Carol Sutton and I'm honored to represent 900 members of the Greenwich Education Association. Though it's not on the agenda, the flood at North Myanis is surely at the top of the boards and cabinets to-do list. Coming on the anniversary of the pandemic, the timing of this event is indeed unfortunate. But we're not strangers to school floods and thus we have examples to follow. For instance, in 2018, the collaborative approach taken by Mr. Mayo enabled COSCO to get back on its feet as soon as possible and get back to their repaired building smoothly. We hope that Dr. Jones takes a similar approach. Because when everyone hears the same information, it cuts off the rumor mill and eases the confusion and uncertainty in the school community. Regarding the path forward, everyone wants the stint in remote learning to be short because our youngest learners learn best with their teachers and peers in person. However, the strategies used for COSCO busing classes to other schools and combining classes to make it work need to be approached with the caution, I'm sorry, need to be approached with caution deliberation during a pandemic. We trust that the administration will look at all options in order to pursue a solution that does not jeopardize the COVID medication practices that have kept the schools open since September. Remote learning, while not ideal, provides continuity while plans are vetted and finalized. A few bullet points regarding last Friday's meeting with the BET Budget Committee. Thank you to Mr. Bernstein and Dr. Jones for pointing out the tremendous work that teachers are doing this year and acknowledging that it is causing high levels of stress and exhaustion and is not easy. We are seeking relief in the form of additional early release days and more planning time, and we hope the school community will support their teachers' well-being should our requests come to fruition. It is also clear that every one of us is gonna have to keep the pressure on for the capital budget that is needed to maintain our buildings and maybe someday getting them into the 21st century. Greenwich cannot have a first-rate school system if it does not spend more on its buildings very soon. Thank you to the IT Department for surveying the students on the pros and cons of their district Chromebooks. If you were to survey the teachers, you'll find similar results and GEA appreciates any and all efforts that will be made to upgrade the devices. We also appreciate the work of everyone involved in the GPS pre-K and Community Connections programs. Unless you look for it, it's possible to miss the amazing work that's done with our youngest and oldest students. Pre-K and Community Connections are solid bookends for our K-12 program. Finally, teachers are looking forward to getting the go-ahead for vaccinations very soon and appreciate the efforts that Mary Keller and her team have taken to load our information into the system so that we're ready for that green light. Thank you, and we hope to see some of you at Greenwich Alliance Tribune Night. Have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right, next up, PTA Council. Mr. Pelguinis.
Good evening. I am Brian Pelguinis, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of all of their members. PTA Council stands ready to assist in any way appropriate with recovery efforts at North Myanis School. Our Remote School Committee has already reached out to the North Myanis PTA to offer help. We encourage all parents and all listeners to join the League of Women Voters and PTA Council for a school budget forum on, at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, February 24th. Go to the League of Women Voters website to register and to submit questions by February 20th for our town educational and financial leaders. We can also, or you can also see the Greenwich PTA Council Facebook page for details. Following on from previous comments, we continue to support immediate steps to alleviate Chromebook issues. Tonight's DLE report asks the appropriate questions regarding funding, impact of changes, and timeline. Given the current issues are affecting learning now, we hope the BOE will provide clear and immediate guidance. In December, we asked that the district provide clarity on middle school science for the next school year, specifically relating to placement processes and the student split between on-level and advanced-level classes. For elementary ALP science, please consider the learning benefits from the more cohesive model proposed in the October ALP review described tonight for both STEM and humanities. These subjects have become more interdisciplinary in the past few years, and the ALP classrooms need to mirror that model in order to best meet the needs of all students. Reflecting further on the ALP report, we reiterate PTA Council's desire to participate in the needed follow-on work as described in the report. Regarding the broader topic we raised of refined pathways for elementary school math, PTA Council is working on suggestions around transparency, consistency, rigor, and progressions. On tonight's agenda, we welcome the introduction of the Linkit Parent Portal, and we appreciate the analysis being done to improve instructions. The presentation gives relative performance among the schools, but the winter benchmark chart showing simply percent correct without more definition is not informative. PTA Council is concerned with the overall absolute learning and performance of the student body. We look forward to more information beyond the minimal amount provided. PTA Council notes the continued growth in the number of preschool students eligible for services under IDEA and the demand for lottery seat applicants. Perhaps it is time for the community or for a community-wide discussion on the future preschool in Greenwich. Finally, if you hear a note of stridency and urgency in my voice tonight, that is a reflection of the academic and social emotional issues facing students because of COVID. Yet, we also need to look beyond the crisis to a time when normalcy returns. At that point, we want Greenwich Public Schools not to be recovering its excellence but to have actually improved its quality. The time to start thinking about how to accomplish that is now. Thank you to our teachers and Greenwich Alliance for all that you do for our students, and thank you. Good night.
All right, thank you, Brian. We are now gonna move on to our community comments. Again, I'll remind speakers they each get three minutes. The clock will be up. Please keep to the three minutes. First up is Elizabeth Dehaven.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Board of Education members, Dr. Jones, Administration, and Community. My name is Elizabeth Dehaven and I hear this evening speaking on behalf of the North Myanis PTA as one of the co-presidents. Our kids are living through a pandemic. We, as a community, could not protect them from all the challenges they have had to overcome in the past year. They've exhibited a resilience that we didn't know they had. This resilience has been fostered and supported by their incredible teachers who have put their own mental health second to take care of our kids and the future of Greenwich. We now find our NMS teachers and students in a situation that has over 450 elementary students facing remote school or displacement for potentially the rest of the year. We, the NMS PTA, plead with the BOE, BET, RTM, and public to commit to not only allocating the funds and supports needed for our children to return to in-person learning and to rebuild North Myanis School, but ensure that all of our school buildings are safe and properly maintained to prevent these disruptive situations in the future. I, my co-president Sarah Klazinski, countless NMS PTA members, other fellow GPS PTA members, PTAC members, teachers, leaders, selectmen, selectwomen, RTM and BET members, are all proud graduates of the Greenwich Public Schools. And we hope that we all, as a community, whether we have children in the Greenwich Public School system or not, can commit to the children of Greenwich and recognize and support that these kids are the future of Greenwich. They need us all to allocate the funds to keep them in-person, safe, and create spaces where they can reach their full potential and hopefully be our future selectmen, selectwomen, BET members, RTM, PTA, teachers, administrators, and Greenwich community members who continue to raise their families here. We, as the North Myanis School PTA, thank you all in advance for taking care of our kids and are here to help and support your efforts in any way that we can. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next speaker is Frances Nobay.
Hello?
Hi, Frances, we can hear you.
Hello, this is Frances Wu Nobay, Co-Chair PTAC Remote School Special Committee. I hope that you're faring well in this wintry weather. Tonight, our remote school learners send a shout-out to the North Myanis School community for pivoting to temporary remote learning. We, longtime remote learners, are here to lend a hand and lend an ear to the teachers. We see you rewriting your entire lesson plan for digital delivery. We know you're replying to 10 times more emails, and we feel your care and dedication to the kids. To the parents, grace to yourself and your family, grace to your kitchen. This is just one more blip in our pandemic life, and we will get through this with love, light, laughter, and yes, learning. Take pics for the yearbook, and if you have a good news story, please share through Thank a Teacher Online. And if you need help, please reach out. We are remote learning experts. Turning to academics, our remote school community has says thank you to GPS for providing tonight's Linkit presentation, which we understand is in response to parent worries about pandemic learning loss, aka COVID slide. We appreciate that the data includes a cut for our grade two to five remote learners. From our sneak peek, we are happy to see that remote learners appear to be performing above district averages in language arts and math. But as Brian Pelguinis mentioned, we're eager to hear the presentation details. Moving to technology, our remote school community is grateful to GPS for providing tonight's digital learning environment update, specifically how to address the performance issues of the existing Chromebook. We look forward to hearing next steps and are happy to provide input to support the process. In the meanwhile, we recommend again that those students who are not able to provide themselves with a second device are supported by GPS. Lastly, as a mom of three kids, home, home, and more homes since early release on March 11, 2020, and Facebook mom to 650-plus remote learning families, I would like to make sure that you know that the vast majority of these remote learners by choice say they're doing good or excellent. For those that need help, resources are being made available. For the rest, hugs at home has been the best way to experience a pandemic. For all partners like the Greenwich Alliance for Education have been a godsend. Next Friday, our remote learners will enjoy a GAE-funded virtual assembly in honor of Black History Month. So thank you very much for these options.
All right, thank you very much. The next speaker is Marla Cernic.
Ms. Cernic, if you could use the raise the hand function so we can find you in the list, please.
Marla, if you're with us, if you could raise your hand. All right, we'll, we'll skip Marla. We'll, we'll see if she's with us before we finish. We'll move on. Natalie D.
Same thing, Ms. D, if you could use the raise the hand function so we can see you in the list to elevate you.
Okay. We'll move on then. The next speaker is Stephanie Cowie. Steph, you can go ahead.
Great. Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Superintendent Jones, and Board of Ed members. I'm Stephanie Cowie, and Terry Lamonti and I are currently the co-presidents at Greenwich High School. I want to recognize the North Myanis community welcoming in the, following the flooding of their beloved school. We are thinking of you and wishing for a speedy return to in-person learning as soon as possible. We are very fortunate for the timing, given it was winter break. We hope future budget requests and decisions regarding general maintenance will be thoughtfully and carefully considered by the BET. With respect to the 2021-22 budget, we encourage the BET to support the operating capital budgets as presented by Dr. Jones. We understand everyone is aware of the technology and textbook needs at Greenwich High School, along with upgraded Chromebooks, and are all equally important in the 21-22 budget to deliver high-quality education. Whether we were in-person or a hybrid of some kind in the fall, we absolutely need to be sure we are ready to meet the most pressing needs of our faculty and our students. Given the BET's recent comments regarding numerous capital projects in the district, we stand with our Greenwich High School community in support of three very important projects. These all speak to safety and security of our students and faculty. Number one, Greenwich High School Front Entry Project is paramount to secure our high school of close to 3,500 people. The Building Committee is prepared to move the project forward with your continued support. Number two, there has been discussion that Phase Two of Cardinal Stadium Project may be postponed for later years. We urge the Board of Ed to push for the completion of this entire project. The stadium should not be half-built. Phase Two, the remaining parts of the project, including visitor-side bleachers, new visitor-side building, and the important second Egress exit roadway for Greenwich High School cannot be forgotten. Number three, additionally, we fully support the remediation of our fields. The complete remediation and replacement of these fields over the next several years will create safe fields for the children of GHS and the greater Greenwich community. We support GHS on the needs for our students with the GHS Course of Study Guide. We continue and hopeful for our seniors and their families that they may be able to experience a wonderful graduation event. While nothing about this year has been normal and so many important milestones have been missed by our seniors, we hope we can all do our very best to provide a memorable experience for each of them. We thank you all for your continued efforts and support of our children, faculty, and administrators. The work you have done has certainly not gone unnoticed. Thank you all again. We appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. All right, the next speaker is Christina Fioravanti.
Hi there. I'm sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Now we can. You might have had two microphones going. Go ahead.
I know, sorry. I joined on my iPad, too. Okay, so my name is Christina Fioravanti, and I am an educator in Greenwich Public Schools. I'm gonna just log off on this. Okay. I'm an educator in Greenwich Public Schools, and I've been at Riverside School for 13 years. And I've been a teacher in the Greenwich Remote Learning School now for this past year because of the pandemic. And I also forgot to say good evening to Dr. Jones and the Cabinet and the Greenwich Public School community. So, good evening. Um, I guess the real, the real reason why I'm coming on tonight is to have everybody think about Linkit. As an educator, I see that there are many positives to it, and I see that there are some challenges to it. Before I get to those, I just want to say that my class this year in remote school are the most hard-working, caring, compassionate students. And I really wish that I was in the classroom with them this year because every day they come to school with such a positive attitude. They're eager and ready to learn, and every day I tell them how proud I am of them, whether they take tests or not. I'm so proud of the way, the way they help one another. So with that, I just wanna go through some of the positives that I see as an educator. Getting the results of Linkit and the data is truly amazing. I can see so many different things. I can group my students accordingly, both individually and small groups. I can use the data to differentiate many lessons, and I can see how they're doing. I think the questions are very well set up, similar to the SBA. So it will show and prepare our students for what the test would look like, should we take it this year or beyond. And I know that this is our first year with Linkit. So I'm willing to volunteer myself and work with other teachers on a committee to make it better for our students or even work with the curriculum coordinators in our district. However, as an educator, the challenges are that the Linkit is not measuring apples to apples. It's measuring apples to oranges. So in September, my third-grade remote students took it, and I was able to see how well they understood material from second grade in, you know, language arts and math. And then they took it again in January, and there was different material on there altogether. And unfortunately, in the math link, it out of 30 questions, 20 or 12 or 13 questions were not even taught yet. So my question, the big question is, what is the purpose of Linkit? Is it a way to assess our students on certain benchmarks and check those off during the year to see how they grow and keep those benchmarks the same? Or, you know, is it acting like a pre-test or is a post-test? That's where I need the clarification. As a parent in the district, I don't know how my child is doing. And lastly, just take into consideration the needs of special needs students. Not just academic, but a lot of these children have occupational therapy or physical therapy or visual motor, and they really need help manipulating the test. They need practice tests given to them and how to understand what the test is all about and its features, not just being able to do well on a test and regurgitate information for us. So I think that's it. Thank you so much for listening to me and have a great meeting.
Thank you very much. All right, the next speaker is Liz Tomassino.
Hi. Hi, my name is Liz Tomassino. I have two children in the Greenwich Public School District, and I'd like to address your priority of ADA compliance, HVAC, security, maintenance, and the structural safety for all GPS facilities and fields. Taxpayers pay $750,000 for a 182-page facilities master plan, which identifies priorities and key issues for each building. Under the BOE's current leadership, there has been no substantial progress. How is this effective planning? Six members of the BOE recently voted to approve $27 million to renovate Julian Curtis, a four-year project where enrollment is down by 14%. How is this a priority? Western middle school fields have been untouched for five years. This graduating class will have never used their home field. What is leadership doing about it? Central Middle School was built in 1957 and has never been renovated. It's structurally unsound and the only building recommended for demolition and replacement. Yet it's not scheduled for renovation or rebuild until 2034. How is this appropriate planning? The BOE wants $4.8 million for Phase Two of the Cardinal Stadium Project, the majority going to the expense of a new road, a new bridge, bridge, and moving tennis courts. How is this more important than having all our schools ADA compliant? Since 2007, the BOE has spent $7 million on capital improvements at North Myanis. Yet we all know what sadly happened last weekend. How is this effective maintenance? Because of the lack of proper facilities maintenance over the years, the GHS the GPS building insurance premiums have increased by 28% to 1.35 million annually. How could ADA be top priority when six members of the BOE voted to pass next year's budget without any ADA spending? It doesn't compute. Mr. Chairman, the superintendent, and you, please need to help the community understand where your priorities truly are. Based on these few examples, ADA compliance is not one of them, neither are HVAC, structural safety, or maintenance. I would also like to remind you that you are elected to govern the GPS, not manage projects, build streets, remedy fields, renovate buildings, or impact your bias towards one particular project over the other. This is why there are building committees and paid employees at the administrative level. I think the community deserves to know when you will truly prioritize and plan on focusing on your elected purpose, which is education.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lester Smith.
Mr. Smith, if you could use the raise the hand function to identify yourself.
Not seeing a Lester Smith. Okay, we'll move on. The next speaker is James Waters.
Mr. Waters, you can go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is James Waters and I have two sons at North Myanis School. I'd first like to applaud Dr. Jones, our teachers, and the Board of Education for their work in setting an example for our nation by getting our kids back in school in a safe manner. I would love to see you continue to spread the word on how you've done it so that others around the country may learn from your example. On the capital budget, I have two thoughts for the Board of Education. Number one, I'd like the Board of Education to explain the key constraints to executing on the facilities master plan, which includes dramatically more spending on annual maintenance capital expenditures and major products, projects. I'm aware of the time constraints, that maintenance work must typically be done during the summer months when buildings aren't in use, but would like the BOE's perspective on what it will take to get back on track with our old and aging buildings. From what I've seen, the BOE has done a good job of prioritizing projects in a fiscally responsible manner, and the public needs to understand the constraints that are holding us back. Number two, I think the public deserves to hear the Board of Education's perspective on the dramatic funding cuts to its proposed capital budgets over the last couple of years by the Board of Estim and Taxation. Funding cuts that the public should know about. For FY 2020, the BOE proposed a 26.0 million capital budget and the BET approved 21.2 million, nearly a $5 million shortfall. For FY 2021, the BOE proposed a 35.8 million capital budget and BET approved 16.4 million, a $19 million shortfall. In FY 2021, the BET said it expected the BOE's FY 2022 capital budget to be 54.5 million and the overall town's general fund capital budget to be 134.6 million. Yet in October 2020, the BET set an FY 2022 guideline for the overall town capital budget at 55 million, nearly an $80 million shortfall from what it suggested just a few months prior. In FY 2022, the BOE proposed a $32 million capital budget, which was endorsed by the First Selectman's Town Capital Budget, but that the BET has not yet approved. We need to get on top of properly updating and maintaining our schools per the facilities master plan. The BOE perspective needs to be heard publicly, particularly if the BET continues to refuse to provide adequate funding, forcing us to kick projects down the road and putting our kids at risk.
That's time. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna circle back for the folks that we couldn't identify. Let's start with Marla Cernic. Marla, if you're on, if you could raise your hand on the attendee list. All right, not seeing Marla. Next, Natalie A. D. Natalie, I don't see you and doesn't appear raising your hand. And then last, Lester Smith. Sorry, we're not seeing them in the attendee list nor they're raising their hands. They, of course, can submit their comments to the Board of Ed via email. At this point, this will close our community comments and public hearing and we're going to move on to our monthly reports, starting with the superintendent update.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. I have a couple of items tonight. First of all, I just want to say thanks to individuals over February break that continued to work to keep our schools open and safe, especially to Mary Keller, who did work with Shemaine and her staff in HR to get our staff uploaded so that we are going to be prepared for the vaccine in the next coming weeks, you know, once they start that process. I also just want to mention kindergarten orientation was today. So if we have anybody watching out there that has a neighbor or maybe it's their first child entering school, you know, please have them reach out, even if they miss the orientation, because we are starting that time of the year, getting ready for next year. I also want to mention on the ADA, and I'm not going to belabor on it tonight. We did talk about it at the Finance Committee meeting earlier, in the budget meeting earlier this week. We do have ADA funding in our budget every year. We do this current year. It's in our infrastructure, smaller projects. It's also in our major projects. And just to give a little bit of an idea, we have 446,000 in the budget this year for ADA compliance at Western. And this was before we really started talking about this this year. Mr. Watson, through an RFP process, did a feasibility study to look at Western early this year, and that's been completed. We also, again, in this year's budget, have 178,000 for vertical transportation at Western. There's, that work is currently ongoing and being installed in the summer. We also have at Cuff Cup School, the playground replacement. We are slowly working through our playgrounds to change the surface to rubber so it's accessible. Also, some of the play equipment that needs to be upgraded, that was 394,000. At ISD, they have 74,000 in playground upgrades there. Again, this is what's ongoing right now, let alone the major projects like Cardinal, which has a very large ADA component to it. Also, North Myanis has 111,000. Riverside has 37,000. So all of these infrastructure and their specifically ADA projects were approved by BET, RTN, BOE for this current year. So I just want to reassure the community that it is a really important issue and it has been. And yes, we do have a lot of work still to go. The next, I think, big topic right now, some people may be watching tonight and not realize kind of how North Myanis has developed today. So we have had engineers at North Myanis looking and investigating exactly at what happened. And I'm gonna turn it over in just a moment to Dan Watson, but I do want to note our principals at Riverside OG and North Riverside OG and JC sent a message out about an hour before this meeting to let their families know that those buildings are gonna go remote tomorrow. And that is adding the advice, obviously, of engineers who have been looking at what's going on, possibly with ceiling issues at North Myanis. Those three buildings are older buildings, similar construction. And so they are going full remote so that the inspections can be carried out. And we received a letter from the building inspector tonight that directs us exactly how that work needs to be conducted. So we're, it's really four buildings now that are going to at least be impacted until these, the investigations are finished. Mr. Watson, do you want to chime in? You're much more articulate than I am.
Tony, I think you had every, you hit everything that I was gonna touch on. Just to be clear, we are still doing an investigation at North Myanis. The original thought that a pipe burst and caused the ceiling to collapse is probably inaccurate. The thinking now is that the ceiling, because of the age of the ceiling and because of the different components that have been attached to that ceiling structure over the years, may have caused an overweight issue to it. We're talking, you know, a building that was installed and created in, I think it was 1925 it opened. It's a very thick plaster ceiling that was attached to the original wood joists with nails. And subsequent renovations of the building included adding sprinklers that, for whatever reason, those sprinklers were just attached to the ceiling rather than to the structure of the building. So that added more weight to the ceiling. So we still don't have 100% confirmation that that is in fact the issue. We are, as Dr. Jones pointed out, we're gonna be doing some testing this weekend, starting on Saturday, where we have an engineering firm coming in and doing what's called a pull test on nails in other parts of the building, the nails that hold up the roof, hold up the ceiling structure. So it's gonna be a little while before we get test results. And we are gonna be testing other schools that have similar construction. Again, those being JC, Old Greenwich, and Riverside. So we're gonna be in there all next week. I don't have a definitive date when we're gonna have any answers, but we're on top of it. So.
Thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Anything else, Dr. Jones?
No, that's all I have for tonight. I think that's enough.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So the OG, JC, Riverside, that's just out of an abundance of caution, based upon the construction of the schools, obviously, they're all a bit older. So is that, that's the reasoning behind it by the engineer in the building department?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And hopefully, we can minimize the disruption and get positive findings out of that. All right, Ms. Kowalski.
Sure. So Dan, as part of what you're looking at in the investigation, is it, or are we looking at it to determine when this started? So I know we've all, we were all out for the vacation week last week. Is it possible that if we actually had been in school, we would have caught the leak sooner?
Again, the feeling right now is it wasn't a leak. It was the actual ceiling that let go. And as the ceiling collapsed, it severed the sprinkler line. So again, we're gonna have to wait to do a forensics test on the sprinkler line. But by looking at it, it's a sheer cut, rather than if it was a burst due to like a cold snap, the, the, the actual pipe would be deformed.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wanna, I, obviously, I think that that's important to figure out. And I think as part of the investigation and looking at the other schools as well, is to figure out, you know, if someone had been in the building, would we have been able to figure this out sooner or how this actually happened? So I think that that's important to get as soon as possible.
Mr. Sher.
Tony, I'm very confused about something you said tonight. You rattled off roughly, I don't know what, a million dollars in ADA investments. And you have a long list of projects that you've categorized. We reviewed and your team and you presented a capital budget at our December meeting. You had, you at that time presented detailed project sheets that we had to vote on and approve as a board. I asked you, which was deferred to our CFO, a very specific question about item by item in the budget. Where was spending on ADA? The question was deferred to Dan Watson. And he said very clearly, it's in the minutes and on tape, that there is no money in this budget for ADA. So I don't know how to reconcile these two statements. I mean, the representation of the administration in December very clearly in a public meeting was there were no dollars. So I don't know what happened. Did we go back and try to re-categorize things or what happened?
No, actually, if you look in the budget book, last year's budget book is probably even easier to see than this year, where it actually listed ADA right next to the, and it's where all the infrastructure projects are. When you look at it this year, you'll see things like lift and you can see the ADA, but it was really easy to see last year. So no, it was in there, but I think at that meeting too, there was confusion because I think we weren't, I didn't really understand what you were asking for that evening, when you were asking for 3 million and you were referencing the master plan. And I wasn't really sure which page of the master plan. So yes, there was confusion that night. I absolutely acknowledge that. I was not prepared for that at the 11th hour of the budget cycle.
Yeah, that's not really my question, Tony. My question is the administration said very clearly in the meeting of what they presented, not what we proposed to add. The question was asked about what was presented. And the presentation was from the administration and the administration said very clearly in that meeting that it, I, because very detailed, we listed categories. We said, where is the ADA funding? And the answer of the administration was, there are zero dollars. So how did that answer change? Did you guys not know what was in the budget or?
No, that's what I, that's what I'm trying to say. I'll have to go back and watch the tape. If I answered incorrectly, I answered incorrectly, but I can tell you that we all know, everybody does, that JC has, no, it is not ADA accessible. So we know that that's in the capital project. We know that Cardinal's in the project, which has a huge ADA component. So the way that we answered that evening, I do think that you had referenced the master plan and I wasn't sure actually what you were asking. So I did go back the next day to pull out where you got that number of the 3 million.
Tony, I'll say this again, I'm not asking, I'm gonna say this one more time and I'm gonna let this go. Please do not conflate and confuse two different things. This is creating confusion for the board and is creating confusion for the public. The question that was asked was your proposal as the superintendent. The, the question about whether the master plan and the rest of it is a totally separate item. So please do not confuse everyone by trying to connect two issues that are not connected. The question that was to the administration was the proposal you made that you asked us to approve. From the administration said, please spend $37 million before Kathleen Stowe recommended any changes, some of which were accepted. The question to the administration was, where in this proposal are dollars for ADA? The administration says very clearly in that meeting to that question, there are no dollars. So if you need to go back and review what it is you guys presented and the questions about your proposal, we really need that clarification because that's what the community heard. That's what everyone heard that loud and clear in that meeting. And now, all of a sudden, we're saying, well, we went back through the budget and all of a sudden, we see a bunch of items that now add up to, I guess, almost a million dollars from the math you just laid out that said, oh no, we're remediating our buildings and here's all of a sudden a million dollars in ADA spending. As a board member, we, I can't, and I don't know about the others. I can't operate in an environment and properly govern on behalf of the town of Greenwich. and properly govern on behalf of the town of Greenwich who elected us if the information is going to so radically change meeting to meeting. It just that can't be. And the administration has to do a better job in presenting. These are budgets that came from the administrators. I mean, Mr. Waters tonight goes on and on about you know, the but the budgets as presented by the superintendent. We asked, I asked you a question about the budget you presented and you gave an answer. But here I here we are now hearing completely different answers. I I need you to go back and figure this out because I I personally, I can't live in a world with these kinds of disconnects. It doesn't it doesn't help us as board members effectively govern the school system.
I appreciate that. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to be sure that we kind of everybody understands that ADA is in the budget and infrastructure and major projects. And I do think that most people do understand that JC, especially Cardinal, are huge ADA projects for us. I don't.
I don't stadium, this budget doesn't.
We're not we're not going to do the back and forth.
Oh, my God. We're just saying things that are misleading, Peter.
Okay, I have a different recollection. Tony has said she'll go back and look. We're going to move on. Ms. Stowe.
So I'm I'm going to go back to sort of the the big news that was dropped on us tonight, Tony. And I know that you mentioned that there was a letter from the town. We first, let me take a step back. We had a finance meeting this week. We talked about North Myanis at length. We were just going to talk about operating and how the meetings went with the BET and capital. And actually, as we got into capital, we couldn't help but sort of focus on North Myanis and what was happening there. One of the things we learned, and I know that Joey asked them and Christina asked some good questions in that meeting, is that well, first of all, that our goal, your goal as the administration is to try to find a way to get these kids back to school in some manner, whether it be at North Myanis, if there are classrooms that are safe or someplace else throughout the district. And I know that you mentioned then that the the challenge, of course, is that what we're able to do and Ralph did such a great job with for Cos Cob, and I remember that so well because we were lucky enough to have some of those kids come to Parkway and Old Greenwich. The challenge, of course, now is COVID, right? And and social distancing. And so that sort of adds to the headache that you're going through. But just as a sort of, I know the North Myanis community really wants to hear it, and I know it's a priority of you guys. But now we sort of quadruple the problem, maybe hopefully not with, you know, and I and I think it's prudent, obviously, out of the abundance of caution. And I appreciate that the the engineers and the town are weighing in on this, that Old Greenwich, Riverside, and Julian Curtis, which have always been at the top, frankly, of the master facility plan because of the age of the schools needs to be investigated. But so with that as background, one of the things I want to direct to you, Dan, and I know that this is a preliminary, but because you talked about in the finance meeting, one of the things you mentioned of the issues with North Myanis, as you sort of as you're looking at it, and as the investigators might find, although it has not yet been determined, that this was a weight issue, right? That potentially the ceiling fell because there were three layers of plaster, other things sort of directly attached to it, and then pieces of the the drop ceiling was even attached then to the plaster. I guess as we go into the other schools, can you just explain to me how quickly, if you get a sense, we could analyze, I guess, what is it? Is it a load bearing issue? And that's how you can then assess those three schools quickly to see if it's on safe for hopefully our children to re-enter and not have to shut those schools down for a long term. So we can just sort of deal with the North Myanis students on their own.
So the the short answer is no, I can't give you a timeline. We haven't really had the engineers go out and do a pull test like I had mentioned, they're going to be at North Myanis on Saturday morning. The other component that could cause us some delays is ceilings like this, original ceilings, plaster ceilings may have an asbestos issue. And we have to test for that first. We were fortunate enough that the ceiling at North Myanis did not have any asbestos present. So the first thing we're going to do at the other schools is confirm that. So along with our engineering group that's coming in and our contractor, we also have our environmental consultant who's going to do a rush test on the areas. So you know, doing the actual pull test in each school, it may take a day per school, and I'm just guessing at this point. I don't know how quickly we can get the results back. I'll I'll try to have more information after our onsite meeting on Saturday.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Kowalski, you've gone once, so I'm going to come back to you if that's all right.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you. Ms. Olson.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So first one, in terms of the the school. So basically, what we're saying is that all of the elementary schools in Eastern Greenwich, other than, let's say, Dundee, looks like they're going to be out of commission for some period of time during this investigation. Is this something I think Kathleen was asked, is this something that can be? Just to clarify, did we say one week remote or like what it's going to look like? How long that initial sort of testing is going to look like for those other three schools?
I don't have a timeline right now. Dr. Jones wants to weigh in.
Yeah, we really, we don't know until they actually go in and start to inspect the building. We just don't know.
Okay, because it's big news for those parents. So they'll want to know, you know, is this something they're going to go in for a day? Or should they so that they can at least plan? You know, the parents that now are going to have kids remote, we have a lot of working parents' community to be able to to figure that out. I think they need to know at least upfront, like, we're looking at this long possible or even if it needs to be lengthened, but something to work with from the very beginning because there's a lot of people scrambling, I imagine, parents scrambling to figure out the childcare situation.
Yeah, we did message in our notes tonight that it was through next week. I will as I've done with two of the breaks that we've previously had, tried to find satellite areas for those families who have a hardship. I found out too late today to really start thinking about that. I needed to message the parents first that they were, you know, we were going to be in remote, but I will be working on that first thing tomorrow morning to see if there's a plan that I can create and work with some partners to have a hardship site for those families that need it.
Okay, I'm just trying to think outside the box because there are so many families, this affects so many families. And we're talking about young, young learners when we talk about remote, which I know is you know, it's like it's a like big news we're all getting tonight, right? But and I is there another option? Is there another site? Like, is if Carmel Academy is not being utilized? Is there a place where we can get these learners sooner than later? Have we investigated those options? Or are we currently investigating those options?
Um, you know, we I feel like we had a little bit of lead, maybe maybe this is why it happened this way. But in the summer, we were looking for alternate sites, just in case, as we were looking at social distancing and getting our schools open, we're committed to that, and we still are. So we had done, Dr. Kerr, Bill and I had had toured all of Carmel. And we actually pulled out all of those floor plans again, I think yesterday afternoon. But most of the rooms are only five hundred, five hundred and fifty square feet, which is not enough to have social distancing inside kind of that space. There's very few rooms that would work and we would not want to relocate just like four classrooms on an unusual campus without, you know, our administrators and people there. So we're looking at all options. I'm making a lot of phone calls and looking at everything we can to be as proactive to have a plan. Principals had also shared where there's a little bit of space within the district, but two of those three buildings that we just found this out about tonight had some of those rooms. So we are working on it.
All right, I'm just and we're all just sort of like getting this or probably solving together. But what about you know, the our our students that are most at risk, all of our special needs students, you know, if you have those classrooms available, let's say Carmel, I'm just, I just want to give you some other ideas. And we have our students with our students that have more high needs. That might be an option if it is only four classrooms or whatever. But I think we need to really think about what we can do for our most about most vulnerable students at this time, you know, sooner than later. My other question is more of just a big picture question because, you know, we heard about, we've heard this and we've received emails from community members around this. But, you know, I I don't necessarily play the political game. I never really have. And I'm just looking at like, you know, I don't understand why we don't just ask for more spending what for what we actually need, you know, we have buildings now that are collapsing, literally like crumbling or collapsing, you know, so because we've 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 we've, I don't want to say we, but you know, through the town processes, I have not received the funding to be able to maintain our schools. So the town of Greenwich not receiving funds from the BT has ultimately, we've has has failed our students for, you know, like, and and I think I think someone had mentioned it, I think Karen Kowalski had asked the question, you know, was the sprinkler, was it the roof or would it have been solved sooner if someone was there? And I'm thinking, well, thank God, maybe someone wasn't there in that actual room, right? I mean, we need to, we need to care for the safety of these students first. So I guess maybe it's to Tony, maybe it's to whoever wants to answer it, but why we don't actually actually, whether it gets whether it gets denied or not, ask for what we truly need to maintain our buildings. I just don't quite understand that. I would ask for what I need.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch.
Oh, I should have taken my hand down. The questions I had were asked.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kelly.
The question I'm about to ask, I'd like an answer from both Tony and Dan. Probably don't have to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway because I want to hear the answer. No child or teacher will be entering a classroom that we are suspicious is not safe. Can I have a confirmation on both?
Yes, you're correct.
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry to have to.
Or or custodians or any staff members.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to leave anybody out, of course, but I I figured construction workers will have hats on, so they'll be safe and expecting things like that. But but okay, including everybody who could be at risk. Thank you for that answer.
All right, Ms. Downey.
Um, I just want to, you know, I know we're all, everyone feels similarly that we're very upset that we're in this position with North Myanis. But I think one thing that this situation really crystallizes is precisely why we need to be focusing on wholesale renovation of these older school buildings like Julian Curtis, like Old Greenwich, like Riverside, who are now going to be going remote because it's not just putting a Band-Aid on these. I know some people who are looking to save money say, oh, well, we'll just fix these five things. I don't think it's as simple as that. And I think the North Myanis situation, as awful as it is, really crystallizes that and brings it forward so that people really have to think about buildings as a whole and doing everything soup to nuts when we're doing them. Just wanted to make that point. My question, I have a question to Dan and to Tony. I don't know if Sean's on tonight. In terms of these additional builds, I mean, obviously, the stuff relating to North Myanis, we have insurance coverage. However, for these additional buildings, Julian Curtis, Old Greenwich, Riverside, how are we going to handle the process and the costs of doing those? And what do we need to be thinking about board wise from that perspective going forward?
For me and Sean, feel free to chime in from the finance side, but it's still too early because we don't know what we just don't know what we don't know. And we know we really have to get through some of this investigative. I'll give you an example. If we had to rent property for relocation, will the insurance cover that? So I'm I'm waiting on the town risk management to answer that question for me. So we have a lot of questions. We have more questions than we do answers right now.
And do we need funds fronted in order to just even engaging these engineers, right? We're now, these are unforeseen costs. And obviously, again, North Myanis is covered presumably by the insurance. But in terms of the other buildings, you know, how are we paying the engineers? Or, you know, that seems, I know that doesn't solve the long term stuff, but the short term or does, I don't know, Sean, maybe you can speak to that. That seems to be your your purview.
I mean, I agree that there's a lot more to know. This is all late breaking news. I would tell you that North Myanis, you know, once you hit your deductible, we should be covered for all expenses for repairs. You know, if we have to rent buildings, that should be covered as well. Any any expenses related to the collapse of the ceiling as it relates to the other buildings that we're looking into, that could be a different story entirely. But, you know, we need, we need to get into it a little bit more.
And our deductible is how much? Just to clarify.
I believe it's a, I believe it's a hundred.
Okay, thank you.
And Christina, just process wise, for emergencies, what what we've been advised by the town to do, and sadly, we have, we've had to do this a bunch of times. We have to use our operating funds basically to get the immediate remediation work started. And then at that point, you know, once we know the figures, we would go for an interim replenish that and the insurance money would then go directly to the town.
So we would just do like a budget transfer kind of thing within our operating funds to pay for it and then request.
That's exactly right. Well, we request money to replenish the the.
Right, the operating funds that we've completed.
Goes to the town to replenish their funds that they get.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kowalski.
Sure. So I had two points, just going back to to North Myanis and also to address something that Christina had mentioned. Look, I I don't, I despite what happened at North Myanis, I don't think the answer to this is the the wholesale, you know, revamping of all of these schools because as we find out, you end up building a school or to handle of a project of twenty-seven to thirty million dollars. We can't do that every year. So that means we deal with one school for twenty-seven to thirty million dollars. And then that we have capital tied up for that for a multiple of years. And then we move on to the next school. We have fifteen schools. I think that's the wrong way to address it. I think what needs to happen, and we need to take a harder look at, is the amount that's allocated for maintenance every year. Right? There there needs to be a an adjustment in how we are handling schools and even aging schools by that purpose. And it's not fixing projects, you know, put a Band-Aid here, put a Band-Aid there. I've never suggested that. But I also think that we're not applying enough capital into our overall maintenance to address issues at the schools. Because remind you, if if Julian Curtis passes, we have that tied up. But and then next year, the following year, we'll have Old Greenwich that's also at twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five million dollars. And then you have an other schools. But what happens in the interim to the other schools while we're fixing these schools? We're not addressing those problems. And there will never be enough money in the maintenance that we put forward in our capital plan to address all of these issues. And we won't get to them in time. All of us will be recycled off the board, if not dead, before we get to the final school. In the meantime, another school, as Ms. Olson has commented, is going to collapse before we can get to it because we haven't addressed these in the maintenance issues. That's my comment on there. As we go back to the ADA issue, just for clarification, Tony, I've been flipping through this budget, as you mentioned it, that it's in here. And I've been flipping through the three hundred and nineteen pages and the line items. And obviously, I'm not going to ask you to do it tonight, but if you could send an email to the board that identifies the amounts that you've specified tonight where there was four hundred and forty thousand for ADA for at at Western, the feasibility study, I'd like to know where that was in the budget and how that got approved because I'm not aware of the board approving a feasibility study for ADA, other than what was done in the 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 capital, what is that plan called? The the long the master facilities plan as well as the other costs you mentioned, and I didn't write them all down, I don't think, as you were rattling them off. But you also mentioned a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for a vertical lift at at Western Cos Cob School, you mentioned three hundred and four, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, and you also mentioned at ISD seventy-four thousand. If you could identify those in the line items of the budget, how they are addressed to ADA and can send an email to the board this week, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, it's actually in a Q and A you'll get. We've already answered that one because somebody else asked that. So probably by the end of the week, you'll have that Q and A.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. I guess I want to say, I think we are conflating two issues here. This isn't simple maintenance, right? This is a nineteen twenty-five building where at some point, people loaded on top of things, previous generations, we've inherited this. And basically, it was sight unseen, right? Covered by a drop ceiling. That's not really a maintenance issue. I think it's a longer term approach. And it is certainly why we, you know, why we prioritize. And it is certainly why we, you know, why we've prioritized to some of the schools that we've prioritized. I guess the, the other learning from, from the master facilities plan is we do underfund maintenance, right? That is the separate issue, but, but it is something that we, you know, that we have looked at, something that we've been told. I, I, you know, part of our challenge again is, uh, is the summer months are, are short. And the longer we go in the school year, the less time there is to get stuff done. We just had a discussion with the B E T about projects that sometimes take two and three years. And so the cycle to get things done is longer and they don't love that, and the money sitting on the books if you're not using it. So it's, it's a struggle to, to figure out what's right, but we certainly need to, um. You know, I, I think somebody used the word unfortunate, i- it is completely unfortunate. Uh, you know, I, I think Christina, I'm, I'm basically where you are. Our average building age is nineteen fifty seven, like, we've got to get real about the fact that if we want these buildings to last. Fifty more years or seventy five more years, it really is about getting to the point where we can see these things that are hidden behind the walls. And in the ceilings and knowing what needs to be repaired, we, we can't just, we can't just keep doing this piecemeal, it doesn't make a lot of sense. All right, Mr. Sheriff, see your hand.
Peter, you're on mute if you're talking.
I think we lost him.
No, he's here, he's just on here.
We, we, we have to be able, I agree, we have to be able, we have to be careful not to conflate this. And as Ms. Olson said, we have to avoid the politics of this, right? The reality of it is, um. Uh, first of all, I want to say, I, I, I actually think Tony Jones is doing the right thing in, um. Proactively and carefully, regardless of what the inconvenience is. Uh, prioritizing safety of children. Um, and if that means they have to go remote and they have to be inconvenienced. Um, I'd much rather have that than, um. Expose them to a situation where an accident could happen, uh, because we don't really know what's going on. That's part one. Part two is, um, I agree with what Dan Watson said. Um, everybody jumping to conclusions, doing Olympic style conclusion jumping, or Olympic quality conclusion jumping, which we're pretty good at. Um, in our town, um, without knowing actually what happened. Um, I know there were people, firemen, for example, circulating pictures that have been widely circulated. There have been people, you know, going on and on about, you know, what, the rumor mill is rampant about what actually happened. I really think we need the facts and we need the forensics, uh, before we, everybody conclusion jumps. I do think however, uh, with this said is, you know, I've said this to board members many times, and particularly all those of you who are newer. Um, you've heard me say this on the board a couple of times. Um, and I know many of you roll your eyes and it, it's okay, I, I, I'm a big boy, I got thick skin. Um, we never really completed the master plan. We never really internalized everything that we were told by architects and engineers. Now we've got a cast of administrators who want to ignore that and do it over. That doesn't make any sense to me, we have qualified people who've given us very solid, specific information about our buildings. And, um, you know, we tend to take it off the shelf when something like this happens. But we don't stick to it and really make it a part of our management system. I think we do have to look at how, how we're resourced and the skills of the people we have managing our buildings. We have reports, we've been audited. And we had one meeting on the audit findings and since then, the board hasn't talked about any of it. The other thing is, I've been on this board a long time. And there are many capital budgets that I have voted against, and I don't mind being the only member voting. But in many cases, they were, I voted no, because most of the board wanted a vanity project. Instead of in- investing in what was not exciting, which is maintenance. I can remember, so none of you will be here, it was just me. I can remember being on this board when the MISA project skyrocketed to thirty seven million. And the only way that project got approved is there was a deal made. Between then met leadership of the board and then leadership of the B E T to cut back maintenance. So this idea that we can get into this blame game with other parts of town government. Is just not recognizing the facts. And I would hope that we would take this event. Which is, uh, very alarming. And commit ourselves to dig in on this, not delegate it to the administration, oh, it's the superintendent's problem. You know, let it spin up for thirty days, particularly when we get through the budget cycle with the B E T. Use it as a club politically with one group or another. I would hope we would say, let's dedicate some time in the next. Four months, each month that we're here. And we, the board, should properly be doing our work on the master plan. We should properly be doing our work on what is it we need to do? Are we making the right choices? You know, I'll leave it at this. This lays with the board, trying to point fingers at anybody else, not helpful. We made these decisions, or our predecessors made these decisions. To invest in projects like MISA, New Lebanon, Cardinal Stadium, other things. We prioritize turf fields over maintenance. So we need to be honest with ourselves, what we're doing and the role that we're playing in this. And I think there's an opportunity to move forward in a positive way. Um, rather than digress into this game of pointing fingers at, I don't know, the B E T, the R T M, somebody else. Not helpful and doesn't move our town forward and doesn't advance safe schools for our kids. Just a point of view.
Thank you, Peter, I guess I'll share my point of view, which is every year we get a letter from the B E T. We also get one from the B O C, mind you, but we get a letter from the B E T that lays out their budget goals for the year. And part of their budget goals is what they believe the annual capital spending should be. And God forbid we ever go over that, and you know, we've had that situation and what we see is a wholesale cutting of our projects. We as a town, not just one body, we as a town need to come to grips with, what is it we need to get done? We have a lot of priorities and you know, if we make one thing a priority over another, something suffers. If we kick the can down the road on a project, it comes back more expensive later and there's always another project right behind it. Um, you know, this is not a easy, uh, uh, an easy topic, it's not an easy one for our board, I don't think we can go it alone. I really do think it's a community conversation, it's got to involve the B E T, it's got to involve the R T M. Uh, it's got to involve parents, uh, because I think that this is going to, depending on the learning from this investigation, it's going to have long-term impacts. And, and I think we need to be prepared for that. All right, Ms. Olson, and then we're going to close it out and move on.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to, um, sometimes words gets minced, words can get minced and words can get put in each other's mouth, so I just wanted to clarify. I wasn't, um, when I was speaking, I wasn't, um, placing a blame game, but I did just ask simply, how much money do we need? And why don't we just ask for it? And nobody answered me, but that was the question I put out there, I don't know, Peter or Tony, like, how much do we actually need and why aren't we asking for it? That was my question, it got unanswered.
All I can give you is my, my opinion, uh, Tony, I, Sean, uh, spent Friday with the B E T, full day with them. Uh, I was very, very clear that we don't, we underspend on capital, we need to spend more, I was clear about the age of our buildings. Um, you know, do we need to spend more, we've heard we need to spend more, can we spend more? You know, there's a capacity question because of, of the summer issue and can we do projects with kids in the schools? And I, I just think there's a lot of moving parts here. The, there's also the bigger question of what will the town absorb? We, we do every year take that budget guidance letter from, from the B E T, we take it very seriously, right? We are, we are a large part of the town budget and we, you know, we try to manage that as best we can. Are, are we doing everything we need to? I, I, it's hard to say, right? Because again, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. And I, I worry that sometimes we, we forget that and we try to, you know, we try to move things to the top of the queue or we, we push things too far down. Um, you know, I, I, I have a suspicion that, you know, we're not going to get everything we asked for this year. You know, we will get a lot of the maintenance we asked for, the bigger projects, maybe, maybe not. And they're put up, by the way, it becomes a, uh, becomes a battle because the town's got projects as well that they want to move on. So there's a lot of, again, there's a lot of moving parts, I go back to my, my previous comments. This has got to be a larger community conversation, right? This isn't just about the Board of Ed, our, our buildings are super important, right? We, we teach our kids in them, uh, we, we trust that the buildings are going to be safe and the air quality is going to be great and all the rest of it. Uh, and they're going to be accessible and, and, uh, you know, are we there? No, we're not there and we have to move in that direction. I think we, we move a little closer every year, but the line keeps moving on us and that's what I worry about. And, you know, I said it before and, and Peter made reference, right? We're, we're stuck with the decisions of prior generations and so some of these buildings, there's a lot you can't see. When we took down New Lab, you know, we've done, we've done abatement projects in the district basically every year, it's always in our budget. Uh, and we, you know, they take out the known issues and they've been doing that for years. It's the stuff you don't know about, right? And that's, that's what worries me, um. It, it's, it's a tough thing, right? You discover it as you go and this is one of those things that we've now discovered and we've got to go look at it. And so, you know, I, I, I know it's been said, but as much as a pain it is for, uh, for those communities. I'd rather take a couple of days and make sure the buildings are safe for everybody. Um, I, I want the kids back in the building, so much work went into that this year, they, they deserve to be there and, and we've got to get them there. But let's, let's let the work happen, let's let the discussion happen in the community. You know, our budget is in front of the B T budget committee, it will go on to the B E T and it will go on to the R T M. I'm sure we're going to be having similar conversations with them. And I think it's incumbent on all of us to keep those conversations going. All right, with that, we're going to move on to reports of officers, committees and liaisons, so if you've got a report, please raise your hand. Mr. Kelly, you have a fast finger.
Uh, yes, I know and fully understand that there are many projects, we talked about things that need to be done. Uh, but pardon my enthusiasm about the project that you guys have asked me to work on and that, that we're trying to get to the finish line. It's been a long time, but we're getting close, uh, we're cooking with gasoline. Uh, we just got the, uh, uh, got the, uh, clearance from our, uh, uh, B E T budget committee, the last bit of money we need to sign the contracts to get things going. Uh, we have everything lined up, the fabrication of the bleachers, that's in progress, nearing completion. We have, uh, uh, now we have the authorization of well on the full B E T meeting on Monday. Uh, to actually hire the contractor, uh, in order to get this project started. Once we get started, uh, we're going to move as quickly as possible, we're going to try to get our incredibly, uh, positive and enthusiastic group moving forward. I called Fred Camillo, our first selectman today, I said, you know, we're crunched on time here, we're trying to get this thing done for graduation. And we're told that it's a stretch to get to graduation or get in undergraduation. But I called Fred and I said, Fred, you know those TV shows when they build a house for the veteran or the disabled person in one week? And they move the bus out of the way and the people there watching the, uh, uh, watching the, uh, uh, the building get done? All those things usually take six months to a year, get done in a week. You know what, I said, Fred, let's try to get our town together and work together on making sure we can get this thing done in time for graduation. I know it's a stretch, Dan Watson warned me not to say it's a possibility, but you know what? As far as I'm concerned, nothing's impossible, he said he's going to work his best, Dan, you're going to call Fred, he said he's going to work with you. To try to expedite speedy inspections by the town building committee. Uh, we're not going to cut any corners, of course, but we're going to try to get those inspections done really fast. So we can get this thing done like those TV shows where we get it, move that bus out of the way and get it done. We got a great crew of people waiting to get started, uh, Tony's been incredibly supportive, uh, Sean has been incredible. Uh, Dan, uh, keep it up, man, keep that work going, keep that positive attitude. Uh, Russ, our architect, uh, they're all working for this, we're ready to get going. We're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony the beginning of March, that'll be our start to get things going. Uh, and hopefully this thing will get done on time, under budget, before schedule, uh, that's what we're hoping to do. So once again, pardon my enthusiasm.
Now, Joe, love your enthusiasm, I think we could use a little of that in, uh, in everything we do. All right, Ms. Olson.
One more thing I need to add, I forgot to talk about something, if I may.
Please.
Phase two also needs to be addressed as well, which is a, a, a project which, uh, you, you guys have also asked me to work on. I am not stopping, nor is our team of people that are trying to work together to get phase two, the road, visitor side bleachers, uh, to get that thing done. We are going to work as hard as we can to get that done, we know we have obstacles and we're going to try to get through those obstacles. But everyone's on target to make sure we get phase two going as well. We're not separating the two, one is not more important than the other as far as, uh, as far as that goes. So we will also be pushing as best we can to get phase two as soon as possible.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Olson.
All right, um, two, two committees to report about, um, first, uh, Greenwich Alliance. Couple of important dates, first, the reaching out grant is open and seeking proposals from all GPS educators. The deadline for that is, um, for submission is March twenty sixth. Um, the alliance is also asking for our support on the following two events. First is Fairfield County's Giving Day, that's February twenty fifth. Um, they're look, you'll, you'll, I'm sure you'll be, you'll see e-blasts coming your way, um, asking you to donate ten dollars. Um. Uh, trying to raise money on a particular day on Giving Day, the twenty fifth. Um, an exciting, fun, um, opportunity is coming up, Carol Sutton mentioned it earlier in her remarks, the trivia challenge, that is March nineteenth, you don't want to miss it. It's a virtual event this year, um, and that's an important fundraiser for the alliance, so please, please sign up for that. Um, the funds raised go for Greenwich Public School teachers and students. Um, and then finally avid success, uh, the alliance newest initiative just received a grant for eighteen thousand dollars from F C C F. And this will help our avid students in both high school and college with professional skill building, mentoring, coaching and good money habits. So a lot of, um, great things happening on the horizon with Greenwich Alliance. Um, and if anyone needs, has any questions, they should contact Julie. Um, for any hours, I think I did better with her last name this time, she'll let me know, last time I totally butchered it. Um, and then distinguished teachers awards committee, so I have all my computers up, so I don't miss anything important. Um, nomination deadlines are March eleventh, um, and once again, also all online this year. So please visit the GPS website, click on nominate a teacher and, um. Uh, under, you know, under the leadership of Kathy Burnett and then, um. Uh, Ca- Vicky Capialli had posted a video that is full explanation of all the relevant information, nominations. Um, any information you need for nominations are all posted on this site. Um, and it will be, like I said, all online this year, um, March eleventh is the deadline, but go ahead and nominate, don't wait till March tenth. Although it'll take them anytime, but go ahead and nominate now, that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Stowe.
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, we had a budget committee meeting, um, earlier this week. And the first part of it was basically for Tony to update us on what had happened at the B E T budget committee. Um, on last Friday, I guess now, and, um, so she gave us a big update there, obviously it was a productive meeting, talked a lot about operating and capital. And then, as I mentioned, our focus then quickly turned to North Myanis and of course, um, you know, impending capital issues there. Um, one other thing that I'm going to mention is that we also talked a little bit, and Joe, we're going to go into this down the road at one point, we talked a little bit about asset value. But what it made, it sort of struck me as we were having this prior conversation. Um, when K G N D did their study and they looked at the asset value of our buildings, they then sort of took a percentage, right? And that was the concept is that you have your assets and you apply a percentage to sort of come up with your maintenance, right? And the recommendation, it was a wide range, but needless to say, even the low end of the range is not anything we've ever gotten near. Um, it was eighteen to fifteen million that they would, based on our fifteen buildings' asset value, that we should likely spend a year in maintenance. Now, historically, we've been around ten, this year we've asked for twelve. Um, and I think that this doesn't need to be political, I think you just need to make a financial assessment, I mean, but you all own a home. If you underfund maintenance, you will by nature have big blips here and there. And that's the trade-off you can make, I'm the type of person that would rather sort of keep up with the maintenance on my home and then not have like a sort of unforeseen capital expenditure. But if we choose to go in another direction, which has been sort of how we've done it previously, that will happen. And financially, you can do a sort of a cash flow analysis and see where you end up. But that is sort of, that was a recommendation provided, we know that we've been underfunding maintenance and if that is the choice that the town makes, there will likely be these unexpected flips. Um, that's something we should continue to analyze, obviously we don't control, um, the exact funding. Um, but it's something we should just continue to look at and I know we talked a little bit about at our finance meeting. Um, so I just wanted to raise that and we will move on, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Downey.
Um, I just wanted to let the board know, um, the policy committee, we are still working on our, uh, retiring of old policies. We're hoping that we will have something in hand for the board for the March 11th. Um, workshop, board retreat, whatever we're calling those meetings. Um, that is our plan. Um, so the committee is meeting on that and other issues. Um, and then just in terms of the GHS entryway, we're putting together an RFP to hire an architect to move the project along, which obviously is not a project that would be happening during the summer of 21, more likely summer of 22. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Going to move on to our first discussion item. I know we've got a lot of guests, uh, from the district tonight. Uh, so this is the AOP Elementary and Secondary Science Update. So Mr. D'Amico, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Bernstein. Uh, welcome everyone. And, uh, before I turn over, the presentation to Bonnie O'Regan, I just have to point out that today's a great day for science and hopefully, uh, the successful landing of the Mars Perseverance Rover inspires future generations of scientists, technologists, engineers and mathematicians. So I, I just want to say, I think it's, it's only apropos to, um, highlight that, that historic moment, um, in science today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Bonnie O'Regan, who's going to give you, uh, an elementary update. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. I'm happy to join you once again to give you an update on another component of the.
Bonnie, can you move a little closer to the microphone? We're having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm happy to join you once again to give you an update on another component of the advanced learning program. As you recall, in October of 2020, I reported to the Board of Ed the science findings and recommendations from the external review of the program. The reviewers found that overwhelmingly all stakeholder groups expressed frustration with the push-in model for elementary science. This was echoed by the Board of Education in October of 2019. And an action plan was put into place to return to a pullout service model for grades three through five ALPS science. I'm sorry, I should have had you turn the slide over. Sorry, I'm used to doing it myself. Um, this year, the ALPS students received all of their science instruction within the cohort super block. At this point, pending any future restrictions, the ALPS enrichment science will return to a pullout program, which consists of 90 minutes of science enrichment instruction per week. The enrichment will focus on the science and engineering practices and cross cutting concepts, which you will hear more about later from the middle school teachers presenting this evening. As reported in October, many stakeholder groups felt that this pre-COVID pullout replacement core model for elementary math and reading worked well with some exceptions. Next slide. The use of the 90 minute super blocks for STEM and humanities instructions this year eliminated one of the most salient objections to the pre-COVID pullout programs that emerged. How it dictated the schedule for the rest of the school. One contributing factor is the limiting nature of this, to the limiting nature of the schedule is that while general education students have a 90 minute humanities block, ALPS students have only 60 minutes per day allocated for reading. And their 30 minutes writing instruction takes place in their general education classroom. As you can imagine, this can be challenging for students and teachers. Paramount is that reading, writing and social studies is now one thing. Out teaching only reading is not best for students or for teachers. The STEM and the humanities blocks allows teacher the, the flexibility to blend the reading and writing or math and science instruction and be less disruptive to the entire building schedule. Next slide. In October, a recommended action for future consideration was to expand the pre-COVID 60-minute out reading block to a full 90-minute humanities block with a 90-minute STEM block to parallel the STEM and humanities blocks in the general education classroom. This action would require an increase from the pre-COVID 1.7 staff allocation per building to two full-time staff members in each building. The total addition can be done by utilizing the current part-time staff in, in each of the buildings and hiring an additional 1.3 teachers. I'm now going to turn this over to Jen Bressler, who will talk about the middle school program.
Thanks, Bonnie. Um, and thank you for this opportunity to ship present our middle school science curriculum. I'm an instructional coach and I work with all three middle schools in district and we are very proud to offer an engaging and authentic program to all of our students and also to truly challenge those that love science. Next slide, please. Uh, curriculum is aligned with the next generation's science standards and focuses equally on three components. First, we have our eight science and engineering practices, which are how we do science. In this case, sometimes kids design and conduct investigations or analyze and interpret data. We also have seven cross-cutting concepts, which is how we think about science. So for example, in this case, across all the disciplines, students might identify cause and effect or study systems. And finally, our core disciplinary ideas are what we know about science, our base content. Tonight, three teachers are going to share what each of these three components look like across grades six, seven and eight. And then I will share our advanced science program with you. Julie Trumbetta is going to kick it off by sharing two of our eight science and engineering practices and what they look like in sixth grade.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Trumbetta. I teach sixth grade science at Western. The first science and engineering practice we'll look at is developing and using models. Real scientists do modeling all the time, which is why this is one of the key science and engineering practices. A model is an explanation of a real world phenomenon, typically an answer to a question. Models represent student thinking in a way that makes sense to them. This could be a combination of drawings, annotations, arrows to show connections between concepts, revisions and always additions of new learning. For example, in unit one for sixth grade, students are asked to model, how are our bodies able to move a kickball? Which was an activity we actually did at the beginning of the year. Next slide, please. Students started with an initial version of their model to show their understanding at that point. Then as we got deeper into the curriculum, which focuses on the human body along with force and motion, they were able to come back to their model with a new color and add the information they've learned. In the first version of this student's model in the top right corner, you'll see the initial thinking in pencil. This is what the student thought the answer to the question, how are our bodies able to move a kickball was at this point in time. We then talked about kinetic energy and potential energy, where you can see additions in red in the second version on the bottom left. You can even see they added a second kickball to represent kinetic energy once the ball's in motion. The third and final model on the bottom right came after learning about human body systems. This student added new learning in blue stating that the brain and muscles control the internal and external motion and how it takes many body systems working together to make this happen. Every student does this three times throughout the unit and they end with a full detailed explanation to the question. The science and engineering practice is exciting for kids because they not only do what real scientists do, but they get to see the development and progression of their learning right in front of them, which is awesome. Next slide, please. The next science and engineering practice we'll look at is designing solutions. In NGSS, students both pursue questions as scientists and solve problems as engineers. In this practice, students are acting as engineers to design a solution to a given real world problem. They again, love the idea that they're doing what real people do day to day. In unit two, they're exploring why we have different climates on our planet and we're tasked with designing a solution for people living in extreme climates. They need to authentically and systematically follow the process an engineer would in order to solve the problem by first designing a prototype from what they've learned about climate and heat transfer, share with peers for feedback, make iterations to their piece of technology or product, and then improve their design. Students love collaborating, sharing their ideas with one another. They get so much out of giving and getting feedback. In the picture shown here, next slide. You'll see the blueprint version of the device turned into the physical prototype. It was exciting to see this come to life for them. This particular device was created to help people living in an extremely hot climate. This wearable umbrella was designed to shade people from the strong sun rays and cool them down with an internal fan. This process that engineers go through and that students are able to live through is rewarding and exciting. And today we actually talked about the Perseverance Rover landing on Mars and students asked, you know, what's going to happen if this, if this doesn't work? And I said, well, what would you do if your solution doesn't work? And they said, well, we would probably go back and fix things and try it again. And I said, exactly. That's what real engineers and scientists do. So you're doing the same things that they do, which is really awesome to see and hear. Next up, we have Kate Brzezinski, who teaches seventh grade at Central Middle School. She will be explaining cross cutting concepts.
Hi, everyone. It's so nice to see you. I want to talk tonight about cross cutting concepts. And like Julie said, I'm from Central Middle School, teaching seventh grade science. Cross cutting concepts are a way of linking different domains of science. I like to tell my kids that either compared to themes in literature of a book. They seem to make that connection when I say that. Uh, both of these themes in literature and the cross cutting concept for the relationship to new scenarios. Knowing this helps the student make sense of new relationships. Uh, some of these cross cutting concepts include cause and effect systems and also size and scale. Next slide, please. So I want to talk a little bit about size and scale. So a really important thing for scientists to be able to do is to make good observations. You need to be doing that in order to be a good scientist. So what I did last year is I had my kids, I gave them two different volcanoes. One was shaped like a very acute angle, very tall one. The other one was a lot, uh, more obtuse and flatter. And I asked my students to compare these two volcanoes and they sketched volcanoes that were very similar, which was very interesting to me. So we had a conversation about size, scale, angles, all these different things that make volcanoes different. After that conversation of size and scale, the students sketched the new sketch of the volcanoes, showing that they clearly were different shapes and sizes. And from that sketch and that observation, they were able to start making a really strong analysis and thinking about, okay, what might be happening inside the earth to create these volcanoes to be so different? So these cross cutting concepts, like I just talked about with size and scale, are extremely important. I'm going to pass it off next to Alex Howard, who's speaking on the DCIs.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Howard. I'm an eighth grade science teacher at Western Middle School. And yes, I am going to talk to you today about the disciplinary core ideas in our curriculum and just give you a brief overview of what they look like in one of our eighth grade units. So the disciplinary core ideas or DCIs are pretty much the meat and potatoes of science class or the backbone. It's the content of what students are learning. And what these are used for in our classes, they help the students to get information, observations and ideas, which they will later use through the lenses of the CCCs or through some of the science and engineering practices to answer our unit driving questions that we have associated with each of our units in the NGSS curriculum. Uh, there are four domains of the DCIs that pretty much encompass all of the content that you would be familiar with um, in middle school science, like, uh, information about solar systems, about the human body. And they're sectioned off into the four domains of physical science, life science, earth and space science and engineering technology and the practice of science. Next slide, please. So what I have for you here is a smorgasbord of images, which represents all of the disciplinary core ideas that you would see in our first unit in the eighth grade curriculum. And the title of that unit is colossal collisions. And in the unit, the students have to answer the question, what are the effects of an asteroid collision and how can we prevent a future one from happening? So they start looking at content, um, from the disciplinary core idea of earth and space sciences, which you can see to the left there, uh, the image of the stratigraphic layers and the graph of extinction rates over time. Students have to analyze information from resource card activities, uh, and collect information that they'll use later to answer the first half of our unit driving question, which is what are the effects of an asteroid collision? Then we do a big switch from the earth and space, uh, sciences DCI into the physical sciences. And the students get to learn more about the general ideas of physics, the collisions of physics and Newton's laws of motion. If you look at the GIF at the top of your screen here, you'll see that balloon moving across the screen and that's one of the demos we have in class, which is fun. And then the students take their information that they gathered from that section of our unit and move on to the final part where they are constructing an EPD or an earth protection device in a final lab that they, uh, kind of are trying to use to prevent an asteroid collision from hitting, or an asteroid from hitting earth. And that's just a brief overview there for you. Uh, I'm going to pass it off to Jen Bressler now, who's going to talk about ALPS science in middle school.
Thanks, Alex. Um, so as you can see, all of our students are awarded a very meaningful science experience. And of course, we want to further challenge our gifted science students. Uh, this quote that was presented in an earlier board meeting really captures the spirit of our advanced science program. Um, next slide, please. In sixth grade science, all of our students explore how we use environmental and genetic factors to explain changes in organisms. They revise and refine models explaining what causes a local algal bloom in a lake as they're learning about weather and genetics. And by the end of the unit, they've identified the cause of the local toxic algal bloom. This is a common experience for all sixth grade science students. Our advanced students will then go on to engineer a solution for the toxic algal bloom. This will increase both the breadth and the depth of the science practices that we focus on. It's a complex issue and kids will need to use real world data and consult experts to be able to successfully design their solutions. Next slide, please. In the same unit, advanced science students may also be challenged with analyzing a data set of oxygen concentration and upon using high school math standards. This is one of the data sets in our Tuba platform. And you can see that the students can manipulate the data in a variety of ways in order to answer their questions. Next slide, please. Our advanced science program is intentionally designed to meet the district goal of personalized learning. Students have meaningful choice as they tackle these complex and authentic challenges. They engage in them, as you heard, the same way that scientists and engineers do in the real world. They use a variety of skills, delve deeply into concepts and ground their explanations and solutions with evidence. And of course, above all, we want our curriculum to inspire a love of science for all of our students. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present our middle school science curriculum tonight.
Thank you. All right. Board members, questions, comments for our staff? Ms. Herschel, see your hand.
Um, thank you. I actually have a couple of questions, um, some of which I had already sent, uh, sent ahead to Mark. So I know I'll be waiting for some result, there's some answers for later, but first off, I want to thank our wonderful educators and administrators for tonight's presentation and sharing your enthusiasm about science with us. It was a really nice overview of our science program, which I know was redesigned to align with the NGSS standards, um, in 2019, I think. Um, so I just sort of wanted to know, I would like a little bit more information really on what we're actually doing to support advanced science, both in the elementary and specifically at the middle schools. I know it's a question that the boards asked quite a few times. Um, the curriculum was always supposed to, you know, we've always been told it's been similar to that, uh, six and six A, for instance, are, are the same, but one goes a little deeper and a little quicker. Um, but what are the other ways that we're sort of looking to support that advanced science classroom? Um, as the last report that we had, uh, you know, said that, that most parents and students sort of didn't feel it, it, it was that much different than the traditional classroom?
Karen, I guess I'll, I'll take the first stab at that question, but then I'm going to probably defer to Sheila and to Jen Bressler. You know, the thing that distinguishes six from six A, based on what the teachers were sharing earlier tonight, it's really the level of rigor that students are exposed to, the depth and the breadth to the science concepts to which they're challenged. And then really, um, utilizing multiple assessment techniques to verify and prove what their theories, um, what their theories are. So it's, you know, the next generation's science standards are robust enough that within our curriculum, it allows for that flexibility of all learners. So Jen or Sheila, I don't know if you want to add on to that?
One of the things that really sets an NGSS aligned curriculum apart from what we have done in the past is the complexity of the research and the design that we're asking students to do. In the past, we created data, this is real world data. Things that other scientists and experts are working on. So we're exposing them to really high level data analysis and really coming up with design solutions or claims with evidence that have empirical support. And we're doing it to a much greater extent than we did in the past. And so this is much more challenging and much more comprehensive than anything we've done before.
Okay. Um, and to sort of follow upon that, um, how are the students, um, at the elementary schools tested and placed um, in the, uh, advanced science, as well as the same question is going to be, how are the students, um, being placed in advanced? As well as the same question is going to be, how are the students being placed in advanced science at the middle school level? I know the placement procedures were reviewed in the past few years. We've had a discussion about it during your ALP report. But the board had noted in past, years past, and especially at middle schools, that a number of the students in advanced science, that oftentimes the number of advanced students in the advanced science courses at middle schools were greater than those in the on level classes. So I was just wondering what, what we're sort of doing to place students at both levels to make them, you know, a little bit more stringent in the requirements.
We had a lot of discussions this year about the placement process. And one of the things we did is we elicited feedback from teachers, administrators and parents in the community. And so one very different thing we're doing this year is we're asking for parental input at the beginning of the process. In recent years, we have discovered with conversations and meetings with parents, one-on-one meetings particularly, that we have a lot of students that are already going to STEM camps, that are engaging in courses and activities outside of school. So we are asking parents to provide us with information, more information about their student that we would probably not have an opportunity to know. So that and the teacher recommendation in the building advisory committee meeting is a large part of our discussion. Another thing that we're continuing to do is to talk about the students' cumulative year of work. And with the new curriculum, we have more project based activities. We have much more design. We have, it's less about a multiple choice test than it is really about taking a look at the student's scientific reasoning over time. So that's another piece of that. And the third piece, which is a really critical component, is the science notebook. Because that's where students are recording most of their work. And that's how they're communicating to us what they're thinking about and how their perception is changing as they gain new learning. So really, we're, this year in placement, as we sit with the building advisory committee, we are talking holistically and comprehensively about each student. And we're continuing that data gathering process through the end of the academic year so that when they go to middle school, that we are assured that they're placed appropriately.
Is that the same procedure you're looking at at elementary and then towards for placement in middle school then?
That would be for our placement for rising sixth graders from fifth to sixth.
Okay, because yeah, I mean, when we just had the report, you know, the ALP report update, that wasn't really, I mean, we talked about the building advisory committee, but there were still placements tests that the students were supposed to be taking. So, you know, if we're not going to be utilizing placement and we're only going to be utilizing parent and teacher input as well as looking at cumulative work, I mean, please let us know, because that is a change from the past. I know those things were always looked at. It's really important to look at the full breadth of what a student is doing, which, so I agree with that. But, you know, if it is changing that we're not using the star as placement and other things, you know.
No, we are using the star. We really haven't dramatically, we've just added parent input. We haven't changed anything else in the placement process. But we've added parent input so that we can have that extra information. We do look at the star, but it's diminished because we really feel that the discussion with the teacher and also the student work and the science notebook is really important. And we also use the cumulative report card grades as well. So those things are in place and they're not, they don't represent changes. Or I would have reported that out in the monitoring report. And we really typically haven't had a placement test for five to six science. We do for elementary science for ALP. And Bonnie, Bonnie can talk about that. But we haven't really done it in science because we have to be really careful with the testing that we're doing in mathematics, that we're not over assessing students.
Okay, and then I guess the last question before I hand it over, I have a few more, but I'll just go with this one. You know, the prior report in the curriculum plan review cycle and Curriculum Institute update that we got in September noted that Aspen was going to be identified as a tool to monitor and track student progress in the identify, in identify cross cutting concepts in science and engineer practices. And that the science team, along with one of the middle school principals, was creating a plan for a pilot program this year to ensure that data was being consistently collected and shared with stakeholders across the, to track students' learning progression, achievement across three dimensions of the NGSS. I didn't know if that pilot had begun and if so, how it was going.
I'm going to defer to the middle school principals since they are just doing that pilot now.
Okay, so we are doing it. That's, that was question one. So if they may not have a response as to how it's going quite yet, but we are doing it. So that's good.
All right, Mr. Kelly.
I just wanted to compliment each of the presenters. I thought you guys did a great job. I loved the presentation. I think the energy was great. I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Doe.
I was going to say the same thing, Joe, but now that you took that away from me. No, but honestly, I love learning about especially what my children are actually learning in school and seeing if I could do the product myself. So thank you so much for that. On the elementary piece, so I guess this will go to either Mark or Bonnie. The sort of changing to this 90 minute STEM and humanities block more permanently, like we've been doing this year. And I can say that I have two that are benefiting from it, so I see it personally. And I can see how it works very well for scheduling, having them home today because of the snow and their teachers, their general ed teacher sending out how the block was going to go. You could see how they kind of seamlessly go in and out of the block. And I, so I could see a lot of advantage to that for the principals. Is it, here's my question. Is it really true that you could potentially solve? How I know historically, the ALP elementary teachers have had to move from building to building. I know the parkways often shared people. With just 1.3 additions, you could sort of solve this moving between buildings across 11 elementary schools?
Kathleen, thank you for asking the question. The short answer is, is yes. We would, we would utilize the existing staffing model that we have in place this year. And we gave you an estimated cost of what that entails. But there are certainly a number of benefits to evolving into the longer blocks of time. Certainly, you did a great job explaining from a parent point of view. We had a parent earlier talk about the benefits as well. And certainly our educators can too. Just the consistency, the continuity of instruction, the ability to work interdisciplinary themes into a block of time, it's invaluable. And quite frankly, I don't know why we haven't asked for this sooner. And if this goes well, I will tell you now that my next year's ask is going to be to look at second grade ALP as a five day a week program rather than a two day a week program. Because I really do think that, you know, I'm new in my role. I'm going to question everything. And hopefully, we can think differently about some things. And maybe we won't always agree. But I do think that there's opportunities here that we're learning about because we were faced with the COVID restrictions. And not everything is bad because of COVID. In fact, I think this is one of the good things that's coming out of it. So thank you for asking the question. I guess my, my last question back to the board would be, you know, step one is taking the temperature of the board. If this is something you want us to pursue. Step two then is for me to go back with Dr. Carabillo, Dr. Jones, Sean O'Keefe, and look and see where the money may be available in order to pull this off.
Yeah, I, so I think you probably saw where I was leaning. And I mean, obviously, I have, and we've also received positive emails from the community. And I've also heard from a bunch of people that are in the program. One of the things I specifically, as I hope I don't get any of the teachers in trouble here. But I like how if you have it in a block, I've heard that they are a little bit more flexible with doing maybe more math one day and more science the next day, just because they were really getting going on math. So then they didn't really have to switch, but they make sure that they get the allocation appropriately. And particularly, I, I always thought it was more logical to have reading and writing together. So I really like that. So I think you have my vote, but I know that it does come down to money. And this would add a benefit package unless you can find a way to sort of reallocate within what we have. This would be something that I would be very much in favor of, but I'm just one. So thank you for explaining that, Mark.
Thank you, Kathleen.
All right, Mr. Cher.
I got a couple of questions. First one is, I don't understand the math of 1.3 bodies and 340,000. Could somebody explain that?
I sure can.
Yeah, I can do that. Do you want me to take it, Mark?
Whoever wants to explain it, I'll take the short, simple answer.
The short, simple answer, Peter, is the 1.3 is additional staffing we would need to secure. But the reason the cost is 340,000 is because we are elevating our 0.7 people to full time status.
How many people would you elevate?
There's 11 buildings, so we have 11.7 staff members currently.
So, so you're saying, let me just repeat that, Mark. You're saying that in our 11 elementary school buildings, every single one of our ALP STEM teachers is part time? That can't be right.
Well, Bonnie, do you want to talk about the specific?
Yeah, I will, because I did all the.
I mean, maybe it is right, but I've never heard that before.
Yeah, so in every building, you have a full time teacher and a 0.7 teacher.
And what is the 0.7 teacher? It's always the math teacher?
It's whatever the scheduling, it could be the math, it could be, it could be a math or language arts.
How do you make that decision? Yeah.
That's a building level decision.
So Peter, that's traditionally negotiated between the two principals who are sharing that staff member?
Yeah, see, now I'm more confused because there's a difference question for the building. And then there's a different question for the district, right? I always understood that these were full time employees that were covering more than one building. That's why I didn't understand when someone said they're part time. I'm like, wait a minute. Now, they may be part time from the perspective of an individual building. Somebody, not here, but could somebody please put this all down on paper and follow up with the board? Because I don't, I don't understand how that, what's in that number that gets to 340,000? And by the way, I, it sounds like a reasonable investment to me. But I'll make my second point, which is, I would discourage the administration. Maybe some board members like it this way. Give me a rifle shot individual decision and I'll give you an opinion. But this is all in context. So increasing staff, super blocks, what it's covering, collapsing math and science together, you know, those are, those may all be the right things to do. But they're in the context overall of the ALP program, which, you know, we had a review earlier. I think I asked at that point, Mark, a couple of questions about, you really got to answer, what's the mission goal of ALP? You had an analysis that was done, there were six points, but you guys came in in the last meeting and only talked about one of the six. So I think I would be very supportive of an additional investment in ALP, but not supportive of that in isolation. I would need to understand the whole program, how it all fits together, instead of seeing it kind of piece by piece. So I realize, and I want to thank you guys, the people who presented tonight. Great presentation, very helpful in getting specific and illuminating this. So it's not an edge you speak, it's in something that's easy for everybody to digest. To your point, I think if the board wants to bring this up, I would hope the board does. I said it at the last meeting. Talking about ALP and the educational program and these kinds of governance decisions is what the board should be doing. The board tends to like to do other stuff, you know, because this works a little harder. But I think this is what we need to be doing more of. So I applaud and I agree. I would hope the board would spend more time on this subject in the coming months to get to a place where decisions could be made that could be reflected in the budget that's built for the following year. And then maybe if we want to do that on an interim. I wanted to go back and I'll leave it there. I wanted to go back on a couple of other things that I didn't understand. And they're just in random order. The ALP English program and the ALP math program in the elementary schools. Lately, this thing has crept in where we kind of talk about elementary and middle school together as an advanced learning program. That's totally new, not a bad idea, but we've never really talked about it that way. I think it adds some confusion. And here's why, and I'd like clarification, Mark. In the ALP programs for English and math, and I don't know if it's true for science. I think it's not. The program in elementary is acceleration. Meaning you, if you're in the program, your curriculum content is grade levels ahead. I believe at the middle school, particularly in science, that's not true. So six, seven and eight, if I'm not wrong, and I appreciate it, if somebody covered it. Everybody's taking the same grade level? The difference is that is the depth and rigor. Is that correct? Because those are like two completely different educational programs, educational philosophies. And, you know, I've talked a couple of times about the speed bump that happens for students and parents as they go from grade, elementary grade five to the middle school at six. But can you just confirm that, that elementary is acceleration? And the middle school is depth and rigor?
Yeah, in short, yes, Peter. And the thing to think about with middle school is this, you know, we're preparing our middle school student for what they're going to have options for in high school. In particular, the, the way we run the honors program.
Okay. And that makes a lot of sense to me because you eventually have to make that transition. So kids are prepared and I, but I just wanted to confirm that. Is, is that, is ALP science in elementary school accelerated? Or it's not like math and English? It's actually on grade level content, but deeper like the high school, like the middle school?
As it stands right now, yes.
Do you want to keep it that way?
I have a lot of thoughts about changing a lot of things. That, that's one of the things that I would like to talk further about with the advisory group that Bonnie's putting together.
Okay, and my last question was, and I'm sorry, I apologize to which one of you as the teachers who were brilliant presenters tonight. Which one said this, but maybe somebody can figure out who said it. You talked about personalized learning and authentic choices for kids. That wasn't clear to me. Can someone explain what they meant? Because I don't think that's what the board means by personalized learning. But I, maybe someone can clarify that. I don't know which teacher presented.
I think that was me.
Hey, how are you?
Yes, so the point is that when we're giving the kids these very authentic challenges, for example, they need to design a solution or, you know, gather enough information to present an argument, they have choice within doing that. So they are, they're able to tie in the things that they're possibly interested in or their, their skills that they're capable of. You know, they're, they're able to place their strengths, so to say, because the tasks are open ended, then they therefore can choose.
Can you give me an example to make that? I understand what you just said.
So for example, one of my favorite units is the one that Julie spoke about on where the kids are designing solutions for people that live in extreme climates. And just to, to walk into the classroom on the day the kids are presenting, you see such an incredible variety of projects. No two are even close to the same because kids just were able to go in so many different, many different ways, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no.
Making it impactful for individual students.
Okay, well, thanks, guys. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, Ms. Downey.
I'm just going to follow up to what Peter and Kathleen were just saying about the elementary school block. And I echo Peter's request that we understand the economics of the potential change in staffing, which, you know, in terms of helping you with a decision. I just had one quick question about the middle school. I know we talk about like the placement process into sixth grade. But is there movement in the middle school of kids into advanced science, out of advanced science? How is that process done?
Christina, thanks for the question. And I see Tom Healy nodding. So Tom, do you want to take that one?
Why did I nod? No. Yeah, so science, just like any of our other middle school courses, you know, we are constantly reevaluating students' progress in all their areas. That's really conversations with the teachers, with the guidance counselors, with the administrators, that interdisciplinary team. And ultimately, our philosophy is always to ensure that students are being challenged to the ready, to the level that they're most ready for. And ultimately, our philosophy is always to ensure that students are being challenged to the ready, to to the level that they're most ready for. Um, so we're always looking to push kids up. And so, uh, you know, when we're looking at a year over year in in um, the middle school. Uh, the science teachers know the the depth and the rigor of that advanced curriculum. And they're always looking to see if there's a certain file that's maturing at a certain point or showing in the level of interest and we're looking to push them up. So. It's really based on the curricular data, the assessment data that we have uh, inside the classroom day to day and those conversations that are ongoing to make sure students are ready for that next challenge.
Right. So it's nice that they're not locked into a path from day one.
Absolutely not. We are always, we're constantly fluid and always looking to challenge.
Thank you.
And that's done across the three mid-middle schools, Christina.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Olson.
Yep, um, thank you for that and um. I definitely see the the value, uh, I can see the value in long blocks, you know, from a, from from the student learning perspective and from the educator's perspective. Being able to, uh, you know, having that sort of flexibility and. You know, when something's really working to stick with it and let those students really grapple with one concept and then. Uh, you know, maybe have less time with a different subject on a particular day. I think that is, I think that's a phenomenal um, model. Uh, that being said, I definitely, as you may already know, don't agree with the idea of, um, I think you said. Up to five days a week, starting in early a second grade. Um, I have, you know, I I've. Done a fair amount of research on the the negative um, consequences of starting to track students so young and and having a five days a week. With those long block schedules does ultimately create a school within a school. Um, and you do start accelerating those students at such a younger age that they are to a certain degree and I. I appreciate Tom Healy and that they that, you know, saying that they can fluidly move in and out and they can, but they're also sort of. Generally speaking, sort of on a track to to move at a certain pace. Um, so I I would not be in supportive of of adding more money into this program because I don't fundamentally agree with the program. But that being said, I do think that long blocks are something to explore. Um, uh, so that's where I am on it.
Thank you. Um, it's Peter Bernstein. Sorry, we have to identify ourselves for the uh, for the video. Um. I I actually like the idea of long blocks, uh, and and sort of the interdisciplinary nature of it for both the AOP program and. And and quite frankly, I think, uh, you know, for every student, I think it really works in in a whole lot of ways. Uh, and students that maybe aren't strong in math, uh, may be more interested when it's combined with something else. So just one of those things. Um, in terms of the the staffing model, I guess we would need a whole lot more clarity. Uh, but you know, I'll I'll just remind everybody where we are. Our budget's been voted on and submitted to the BET. It's under consideration. So. Uh, you know, it's not like we're going to have the ability to go and and add anything to it. Uh, to the extent that we can repurpose what we have in that budget. Uh, you know, that's something that we certainly can explore, but uh, you know, we are not at a place where adding staff makes a whole lot of. A sense to a whole lot of people in the town. Uh, you know, we have things we'd like to do like social workers, which we just don't have the funding for. So we, we have to, we have to figure out how to. Resource things appropriately and this is when I, you know, I'd like to see resource. I just. I I don't see how we can do that without reallocating from somewhere else. Um, I guess I also do want to point out, you know, you talked a little bit about the shift in the identification of students for science. Uh, from elementary to middle, you know, we we've been hearing from parents now that there's a shift in the way we're doing the identification for English. So we heard from you not very long ago, Bonnie and Mark, uh, you know, how we were doing it and now we're hearing COGATs going away and there's other changes. So I guess. You know, I I think the board probably should hear more from you. It doesn't have to be now, but on those changes when they were made, what the thinking behind that was. Um, you know, that would be helpful for us and just making sure there's there's better communication, both to us and to the parents. Uh, because I know there are a lot of people, you know, concerned about placement. Uh, the middle, the elementary kids are going through it right now for middle school about course selection. Uh, the middle school kids are going through it for high school and uh, you know, there there's a lot that that rides on on those things. So we. Just want to make sure there's better communication there.
Peter, do you mind if I uh, respond quickly now?
Given that it's not really uh, germane to the agenda topic, I I'd rather we not take it up right now, Mark. Um, but I I do want to hear from you certainly, and I know the parents want to hear from you guys, so. Uh, with that, I'm not seeing any other hand. So I think what we'll do is we'll move on to the next item. I want to thank the teachers very much. Uh, at least one of them I know very well and uh, and I know the work that goes on in in her classroom is uh, is absolutely amazing. Uh, so thank you all. Um, and Mr. D'Amico, you can stay right there because the next item is the Lincoln update.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Bernstein. Uh, Lincoln is certainly um, a topic that a lot of people are interested in. Uh, we have several people presenting tonight, Jennifer Lau, Research Manager. Uh, and from a principal perspective, we have Ally Michaelson from New Lebanon School and Jennifer Bensavango from Old Greenwich School. And uh, before we get into the meat and potatoes of the program, uh, in in and and what we're presenting tonight. I I do want to say that it was, um, it was intentional that the uh, data that's going to be shared tonight was preliminary data. Simply because we were still within the testing window when it was time to publish the uh, report to the board. So we look forward to in March, giving you much more detailed uh, data on the Lincoln results from uh, the winter benchmark assessment. So with that, Jen, I'll turn it to you.
I don't believe she's connected. Uh, let me actually unmute her.
Sorry. Yes. Okay, got it. Yes, sorry. All right. Uh, next slide, please. Um, we're going to, Mark's uh, entire presentation covers three topics. I'm going to be speaking briefly on the parent portal launch, then Mark will be discussing the how our remote students doing with the preliminary winter benchmark data. Um, I'm actually going to be coming back in and giving you a a mini update on developments. On how we're deploying Lincoln and then we will transition to um, Ally and Jen. As they give more specific examples about how the schools are using the benchmark data. Uh, thank you. Next slide. All right, so this will be very fast. Um, what I'm going to do is simply preview what parents will see when they. Uh, log on to the Lincoln parent portal. Well, I have to think of exactly what we're going to call it. But you can see that there is a um, Google SSO. So for parents who have a. Uh, Google account, they won't have to remember username and password. We all love Google SSO. And this is just the welcome screen where they will log in. Um, that's just the link at homepage. Uh, next slide, please, Mike. When they go in, oh, sorry, very important point I should have made with the last slide is that this is all of the exact same data. That they had in the prior platform. It's just been ported over to a new platform. So there's no dropping of data in there. We have five years of data and um, actually a a. We think this is a uh, cleaner way to get into it. So now we can go to the next slide. So when a parent enters a pa- uh, student account. They will see all of these menus and the data can be organized either by subject. Since we're going to have all of the test data in addition to attendance data, all of their grades. SBA scores, but this obviously family consumer science relates to uh, their grades. But if they were to click into language arts, which I'll show you later, you would see all of the information related to language arts. The parent also has the option of organizing the data differently. Uh, next slide. They can organize it by year. And this type of organization options are also that which uh, any of our teachers have. They can also have the ability to look at a student record in in these multiple ways. And then the next slide, Mike. Is they can organize by data type. So here you can see a subset of the things that we have loaded in. Um, attendance, grades, NGSS, PSAT, SAT, STAR, SBA, et cetera. So what a parent does is they would click on any one of these specific bars and next slide. They would see a list of the entries for each of those areas. So here you can see. Um, I've taken a snapshot of of what would be available for this particular student for language arts. And you can see that there's a star there going back a few years. You've got, you see SBA growth, you see SBA. Um, on the left-hand side, what I'd like you to see is that there is a list of entries for the students. So in this case, I have three children, a parent logs in and they would click on each of those children in order to see their various records. Next slide. Once there were, uh, a parent gets in, they can then select an item to drill in to get additional data. And here you can see if they had selected the star, they would be able to see the level that it was associated, the scaled score, the percentile. And the associated Lexile level. So they can drill in, um, this is what you would see on SBA and the next, I'm sorry, star and then the next slide. Is what they would be able to see on SBA. So you can see the overall level and then you will be able to see the sub scores. Because as you may recall, the SBA is a, there's an overall composite number and then there are three sub scores. Um, next slide. So in the initial rollout, which was going to be fairly soon, but as Mark alluded to, we've had an extension of. The star window because of a uh, convergence of quarantines and snow. Um, the first phase will have all of the same data that we had in the prior portal ported over. And then in phase two, we're going to have the benchmark detail released. And here you can see a sample report. Where um, it reads grade four math, Form A. So Form A is the fall administration. Of the benchmark and you can see that there are options to see each of the standards. So for my individual student, this is how I performed and the standards, parents do not speak for dot NBT dot A two. Uh, that's meaningless, but what you can see on the right side of the slide is just as you hover over each of those standards. You get a description of what the specific standard is. And what we're going to do is when we release this information out, we will be giving parents. Um, links so that they can get additional information about what each of these standards represents. Both at a state level and in common core. And I think that concludes my introduction to what parents will be seeing in their parent portal in Lincoln.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, i- if there's one question I'm asked quite often. It's how are our remote learners doing by way of comparison to the students in our brick and mortar locations? So I thought it would be helpful, even though again, this is preliminary data. That um, I share with you um, how our remote learners are doing. So if you look at the uh, bar graphs, you'll see that the. Uh, Greenwich Remote Learning School is in green. Uh, the district average is black and then we have all of our schools fleshed out in navy blue. The uh, red through line is to bring your attention to the fact that, and this is a question I'm asked quite a bit too. In terms of the benchmark assessment. Um, it it's important to understand the the philosophy of the assessment, which is um, given throughout the year. It's utilized for progress monitoring of standards that are ascertained by students as they're exposed to tho- that curriculum. So it it's not unusual at the beginning of the year for a student to not score very highly. Because they haven't been exposed to the instruction of these standards. But by the winter benchmark, in theory, our assumption should be that at least fifty percent of those standards have been covered. And that students are 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 tracking in the direction of a hundred percent exposure and mastery by the end of the year. So I think that's an important distinction to make, but again, uh, this is preliminary data. Uh, I know the board would like to see much more uh, drill down information and I think once. The dust settles on our our assessment window, we can certainly provide that in March. Um, so these two slides, this one is the math performance and then Mike, if you could switch. This is our ELA performance. Um, overall, what what does this tell me? It tells me that we are doing um, quite well. Um, so whereas at the beginning of the year, people were very concerned about what type of learning loss there might be. Because of the disruption and instruction in the spring. Again, this is one data point, but what this one data point suggests is that we're doing quite well. Next slide.
But I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, but just can we go back to that slide real fast and I know. I I'm sorry, I don't understand the red line concept and and before we jump to something else, since we're talking about it. Can you explain to me how we're doing very well? Because I don't, I don't understand how this bar graph is supposed to provide that information.
Sure. So so think of it this way, at the end of the year, the expectation is when the students complete the spring benchmark. That they will have been exposed to all of the standards that are on that benchmark assessment, thus scoring, we hope, a hundred percent. Uh, by mid-year, the assumption is you've been halfway through your curriculum, your prescribed curriculum. So students, when s- when they're exposed to standards they've been taught, they should score well on those standards. Is that helpful?
Yes, so that suggests that, for example, and it's small on this one, but if I look at. Some of the students in some of the schools have not yet met the benchmark is what you're saying. So if I look at. Um, what is it? Uh, JC, for example, and I can't read the next one. My age or my eyes, I can't see it. You're saying that of the tests in Form B, so this was the. Went just the most recent testing. Those students in the fourth grade class there had not met the benchmark.
Now, that very well may be the case, again, once the window is closed and all of the data is analyzed. Or it may not be the case. It could be that those numbers go up. Um, I I can't give you a definitive answer, Karen, on that just yet, because w- we need to crunch those numbers once the window closes.
Okay, so when will you have updated data?
Well, I believe that according to the board agenda plan, uh, the hopes is that we will be back in front of you in March with that information.
Okay. Apologize for the interruption, but I, we were on the slide and I didn't understand how to read it, so I appreciate that.
No, thank you for asking. Appreciate it. So I'm going to turn it over to uh, Jennifer Bensavango at this point, who's going to talk. Oh, sorry, Jen.
Yep, okay. Uh, I'm I'm going to lower my hand. Um, yes, at this point, uh, what we'd like to do is share with you a four-minute video. Um, of how schools, the district can compare Form A and Form B. And what additional analytics are possible. Um, remember that Lincoln is is really three separate. Modules, there's the data warehouse capacity, there is the analytic capacity and then there is the assessment platform itself. So going to play a four-minute video to show you kind of how we're stepping through in terms of deploying the product. Um, I'm going to share my screen. Mike, can you talk me through this? I'm going to hit share screen.
Hit share screen, make sure that you hit um.
Share sound.
Sound, yes.
Okay. All right. Video is to illustrate what a school can do now that we have Form A and Form B uh, completed. And we're using an anonymized version of North Miami School. Um, I've already brought us into third grade math as an example and I've got. Form B, which was administered in the winter and Form A that was administered in the fall. Actually, let me switch those around. So you can see a general distribution of the scores. Remember, these are end-of-year standards as students who are seeing material. That they haven't uh, been given explicit instruction on, doesn't mean they don't know it already. It just means that. Uh, we've got end-of-year standards and you can see between the fall and the winter that there has been a distinct shift. To the right in terms of uh, the scores, which is a positive sign. Um, we have the usual uh, abilities for each of these, which. I can do class diagnostic and I can choose a class, we'll take Klein. And I can see where we are on the standards. I can also click on one and say, well, seventy-seven percent is great. But in fact, I've got one student who really wasn't, you know, didn't quite uh, master this material. I should probably go back with them. I'm guessing these standards haven't been taught and they're fractions. Of course, yes. Um, so that's one terrific, uh, that's one of my favorites. You can also do a grouping report where we say, um, I'd like to group. Students based on standards. These three standards are all of the standards. How do I look? And I've got one group, which is all red and orange and. And I've got a nice solid group down here. So now I can start deciding what I want to do in terms of instruction. Let's think about whether those were standards I needed to move forward. But what is really interesting now is that I can compare form A and form B and start looking at individual students. So I click student results. And what I get is a direct comparison for each child. And I can see how each individual child has advanced or not advanced. In this case, I've gone from 50 to 67. In this case, I've gone from 37 to 73. Here I've gone from 73 to 67. So you've got, um, you know, a way to be able to gauge individuals. I can also generate this report, which says, how is this class doing in aggregate between form A and form B? Ah, this is great. I had direct instruction on this. You know, 83% is terrific. I wonder how the rest of, you know, where's my outlier? These we've already established fractions weren't taught, so that makes sense. Or if I still had an average score of 50%, so students are not completely unfamiliar with this. And I can use that as a foundation to move forward. There's also a graph. I can also see this same information on a student by student level. And the last thing that we wanted to share with you is that we can create cross school visibility. So the secondary schools can look at the profile of the rising students before they actually arrive. So here is an example of Central Middle School. And we'll say Tom Healy, but there are several people with access to this. And Tom has a group of the rising sixth graders. As well as last year, you can see the same group was created, rising sixth graders for last year. And all of the data associated with the students at his feeder schools is available to not just Tom, but his S D T as well as his guidance counselors. We're very excited about that as a way for the secondary schools to get a sense of their overall incoming class and what might be the best way to schedule to meet their collective needs. And finally, we've been gone exploring the assessment platform component of Lincoln, where we can build our own custom assessments and leverage the analytic capacities on our own instruments. So thank you. That was a very speedy drive through. Let me stop sharing. New capacities we have with Lincoln. And with that, I will turn this over to Jen Men and Ally Bartholomew.
Just before Jen, uh, you take over, I just want to clarify that that's all anonymized anonymous data that we're presenting.
All anonymous.
Okay, Jen.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Jones and members of our community joining us tonight. My name is Ally Michelson and I'm the proud principal at New Lebanon School. Ms. Bensavango?
And I am Jen Bensavango, the proud principal of Old Greenwich School built in 1902, right behind.
And we're built in 2017, 18. Thank you for providing us with the opportunity to share with you how we are using Lincoln as an instructional tool in our buildings. Tonight, we will discuss the purpose of Lincoln, the teams who use Lincoln in our building, how we analyze data, when we meet, what this looks like in practice, lessons we've learned, principal collaboration and next steps. That was on the previous slide and then, um, the purpose of our, our meeting this evening is to share with you how we're using Lincoln to analyze student data to inform our instruction in the buildings. Ms. Bensavango?
Great. So we, um, we pull together instructional teams and those teams include our literacy and math specialists, building administrators, our Lincoln super users, grade level teachers, special educators, ALP teachers, ELL teachers, anyone who's really touching the core academics with kids, um, to make sure that they have an opportunity to look at this data, look at how we're analyzing it, both from a tier one and a tier two perspective. And next slide, please. So that, you know, the question comes, when do we do this and how do we do it? And we're actually in the process of doing it right now. So we have, um, the opportunity to pull together grade levels with our Lincoln super users and the committee that we talked about. And meet for sometimes half a day to go through and really analyze and drill down the data. We haven't had the opportunity to get into, um, you know, question by question analysis, seeing how our students answer each individual question on an assessment, really since the C M T. It's been a long time since we've been able to do that. And this, this tool provides us that opportunity. So we can go in and look very specifically at how each child is answering a particular question. We can, um, at that point, get a, a good idea of is this content area that we are struggling with? Or is it, you know, they haven't fully read the question and didn't realize that they needed to select two answers instead of one? And sometimes when we use star or some of our other vehicles for assessment, we don't have that question by question analysis for each of our students, whereas this tool allows us to do that. It also, as Jen just shared, um, gives us the ability to analyze by standard, by skill. And we're really drilling down with teachers to identify whole group instruction, small group instruction, and what those next steps are after each assessment window, both for reading and for math. Next slide, please. So we do this after every, in, in this really varies in every building. Ally and I both, um, do this right after every Lincoln benchmark administration. And we do it, um, in up for up to a half day. In some instances, um, the first round in my building, for example, we used a half day. This round, we spent about an hour and a half with each grade level. But it was enough time to really dive into the data and then send the teachers off to determine next steps for their individual classes and sometimes for the class as a whole. And next slide.
Ally? Thank, thank you. Now we would like to speak to you about what this looks like in practice and how we are able to use Lincoln as an instructional tool to improve student outcomes. Next slide, please. Two examples I will provide this evening focused on whole class instruction and small group goals. What you see here is an example of how we drill down to the common core standard or skill level where students may be struggling, which Lincoln allows us to do. And then we develop instructional strategies that align to those standards or skills. This step allows teachers not just to see and interpret data, but to actually plan for future instruction based on what the data is telling us. Here you see examples of reading and math standards where a majority of the class struggled and instructional strategies aligned to those standards for teachers to implement. Next slide, please. Here you see an example of a SMART goal, the team developed for a small group of students who struggled with showing numbers to the hundreds in different ways. SMART goals stand for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant or realistic and timely. And it is the gold standard of goal writing in education. Not only did the team write a goal, but they brainstormed types of questions teachers could ask students to check for the actual understanding of that skill. Next slide, please. Ms. Bensavango?
So when we looked at the lessons learned, and this varies obviously for, um, for every homeroom, for grade levels. We really were able to take a look and say, in, in some respect, is it the vocabulary, the vocabulary that we're using on a daily basis with kids? And what we're looking for in the questions that we're asking? Do we need to incorporate a different level of math vocabulary, for example, in the classroom? Because, um, the language that was used on the test wasn't necessarily consistent with what was happening in the, in the classroom itself. Or in the reading questions, um, when we were diving deeper into them, were the kids understanding what the nuances were that the, the, um, that they were looking for as far as answers? Or did we need to dive deeper and do more close reading examples? And so when we do that analysis and we are looking at it holistically with the, the grade level and our literacy and math specialists, we're really diving into that data to make a decision about where are we in the curriculum? Is this, are these questions that we haven't yet touched? Have we touched it? And it did one class perhaps get it, um, at a different level than another? How is that teacher teaching it? If, um, if another group of students seem to struggle, do we have a consistent problem in a particular area across the grade level that we need to go back and do a reteach? Do we need to really think about how we're using some of our, um, alternate times in the day? So like the, um, the what I need now block, that wind block of our day, where we can go in and provide enrichment and reinforcement for some of our students? Do we need to revisit some of the work then and go back and do some reteaching? Or are we at a point where our kids have a particular skill? And they're going into this assessment already having it. And we perhaps haven't even, you know, touched on it quite deeply. And are we able to extend that at that point?
Next slide. And one now. Now we're going to share, that's okay. Go ahead. Now we're going to share with you what this looks like as a collaborative principal team who oversees the 11 elementary schools. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. Mr. D'Amico has implemented a principal team structure with lead principals who meet regularly in smaller groups of three to four principals. This structure allows us to collaborate on a more regular basis and share out best practices that are happening in our buildings. In addition, all of our math interventionists are split between two buildings, allowing for additional collaboration across schools. Next slide, please.
And, and our next steps are, are simply to continue to analyze this data. So we, um, we're, we're in the process of meeting right now with teams is the final benchmark B data is coming in, we're looking at trends that we see. But it also helps us in, as we're looking at things for next year. So if we see a common trend where a particular lesson or unit was an area of concern across a grade level. And as we're planning and thinking about next year's curriculum, we're all met already starting to talk about how we need to modify the instruction next year to dive deeper into a particular area so that we can continue to grow both in our day to day and then in our long term as we tweak our practice. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions for anyone who presented on the Lincoln tonight?
All right. Thank you, Mr. D'Amico and, and our principals of our newest and oldest schools, nice bookends there. Mr. Share.
Thanks for the update. The when you say form A, form B, you mean tests, right?
Yeah, the, the administration.
The administration of the test. Okay.
Correct.
And then Mark. The, these are the people who are taking Lincoln. You, you're talking about them taking that, the embedded, the test that's in Lincoln, right?
It's the test that Lincoln created themselves. Yes, it's their canned version of a grade level standard assessment.
Okay. Cause that's what I wanted to ask about. The last time we talked about this, it was presented as these tests were developed by us in these, and they were being loaded in.
So, so Peter, let me.
I think, I, I, I think I heard somebody say, these are tests that are coming from Lincoln for the testing of the standard. I just got a little confused and maybe you could clarify that.
Yeah. And, and it can get very confusing very quickly. So, so to clarify, the benchmark assessments are the assessments created by the Lincoln group. That said, Lincoln is a robust platform and it allows us to upload our internal assessments so that they can be warehoused. We hope that that's the direction that we move into or grow into as we become more facile with the Lincoln platform, Peter.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that, but, um, okay. I, I mean, I, the, the, the struggle with this is that, that I was not comfortable with Lincoln is, cause I asked Jen Laugh this question in prior meetings is they're a new company, they're a small company. The critical part is using assessments because you guys are decided to be, you know, 100% aligned to common core standards at a particular grade level. There's a whole bunch of problems associated with that. But I want to put that on the side. Let's just take it as it is. You've said, I'm assessing that standard specifically competency in this particular grade at this particular moment. You know, 100% alignment to essentially the common core, which is Connecticut standards. It's not granite, not, in some cases, it's not Greenwich's standard. So, but I, I think I'm going down that track where you're saying, Mark, we've given a, a early assessment, which you would call form A, I guess, which is where does the kid stand when they come into the district? Uh, come into the, uh, grade. Then you're doing B, which is the second administration of testing. And that's done when? January?
Correct.
January. And then it said in there, three or four, is it three or there's four?
So there's three, but this year, Peter, well, but this year I want to be clear on this. We did add a fourth. And that was the one that we gave at the very beginning of the school year and it assessed last year's standards. So that teachers had some data point to add.
It was an ad hoc.
Yes, correct.
But you're saying normally there will be three, just like star. So are we, we doing Lincoln and star? We're doing Lincoln and star, right?
Currently, yes.
Okay. So, um, and then my question was, Mark, you're saying that the second administration is not complete, so you don't have all the data yet? Is that what Jen was saying?
Yeah. I mean, we, we were hoping.
For whatever reason, it's not complete.
Correct.
Right. Okay. And then the, what is the benchmark standard?
Uh, tell me a little bit more about what you're asking.
Okay. So if I go and I administer, if I'm, if I go in and I look at, um, whatever the, whatever the particular standard is, uh, fractions or, you know, numbers up to 100 or in 10 base or whatever, whatever that particular standard is, right? You're assessing for it in a particular grade. You're assessing for mastery, right? But there has to be some, uh, it's not mastery, uh, maybe it is. Mastery is a hundred percent of the questions were answered correctly. There's some standard level that you set that determined mastery of that standard. Meaning I gave them an assessment and they got a score of 70% of the questions correctly. I mean, uh, that's a simple form, but it's typically done in a little bit more sophisticated way, particularly with an automated system like this. But, um, my question is, what is our standard of mastery? What is our, what is our performance standard that indicates mastery?
Well, the expectation, Peter, is that we're at a hundred percent by the end of the year, but in terms of.
Well, Mark, I'm sorry, I'm, let me interrupt because I'm, I'm realizing I'm taking you not in the right track. Away in the olden days, probably when you and I, a passing grade, which would have been mastery, would have been a C. That's 70%. You're demonstrating that of the content that is being assessed, you can properly demonstrate that you know 70% of it. That, that was in the olden days, a mastery standard. What I'm trying to understand here is of, I get all the, you want to teach a hundred percent of the strands. But in each strand, what is the standard by which we have declared that a student has achieved mastery?
So I don't know if it's possible to pull up one of Jen's slides where it shows the color bands with the different percent correct.
Yes.
That, that's, that's what I would, I would point to, Peter, but in terms of this, in terms of this.
What is that standard for us? That makes the thing, I guess, green.
Jen, do you have that information?
Yes, I, I think the important distinction is, is that this is, we're using this as an instructional planning tool and it's, it's really not evaluative of the student. But to your point, you know, there are a, the
That doesn't make any sense.
Lincoln's history and they have, you know, over 10 years of administering these exams and aligning with common core is that if a student has approximately 70, 75% that they would be able to pass the, uh, the common core exam. So here where you've got, you know, we're at the 50% mark. If we were to move in an aggregate, you get to 75%. Now, does that represent 75% on every standard? Or is that, I know, you know, a hundred percent of the 70, of 75% of the standards? This is all information that we're going to tease out once we actually get SBA results. This is all information that we're going to tease out once we actually get SBA results.
Yeah, Jen, I don't, I I think, hold on, let me, you you're jumping a little too fast. Can you please go to the one where you have a student example and you did, or maybe that was in your video?
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is is that I understand the SBA. The SBA in grade three, there are twenty common core standards, the SBA will assess a student on all twenty. That's what the SBA will do. Okay, it doesn't go standard by standard. It has a series of questions it answers and it'll give a comprehensive view of a kid after they have been taught all twenty standards. I get that part, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is you guys have connected to, in order for a kid to perform well on the SBA, which is our definition of mastery. Okay, they have to learn all twenty standards. Cuz if I don't teach them all twenty standards, they're gonna get a test and there's gonna be a gap in their learning to what they're assessed. So my question is, and I understand what you guys are doing. You're going along with a teacher during the year and saying number one of twenty, I have to be sure the kid nails that and I've determined in the district what level they have to hit so that I determine in the district they mastered stra- uh uh standard number one and standard number two and standard number three and standard number four. And I understand that that all builds to the end, which is if a kid gets some percentage correct, I've did, on each standard, I've determined they've mastered that standard and a kid who's mastered all twenty standards is gonna have twenty greens in our charts. So my question is, what is your performance level that you're applying to each standard? That you mark the thing green, which tells a teacher the student has reached the mastery level for this standard. Obviously, if they're not at mastery, they're either yellow or red.
Yeah, Peter, I think if we could pull up the.
So I'm just wondering what that level is, is it seventy-five percent?
Just wanted to know the number that that distinguishes the three colors.
Yeah, we have that.
I'm only interested in what number triggers green.
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent is your sta- so you, they have to get an an eighty percent score in the Link It's assessment for that standard to get the thing to go green.
Correct.
Okay, and then, let me say this this way. If a student is then at eighty percent green in all standards for that grain level, you would expect them to get a um a mastery score, even if it's at the lowest level, I think that's level three in in uh Sback. You would expect a kid who has that would then be able to perform at grade level, if you will, on the Sback. They may or they may not, but that would be your expectation, correct?
I I'm following your logic, the the my hesitancy in saying correct is the Link It has to prove itself to me that it does have a strong correlation.
The theory is that's how it would work.
Yes, the theory is correct.
And your standard is eighty percent. You answered the question, thanks, I totally understand. I totally see the value of this as an instructional tool. It's a great for teachers cuz it breaks it down to a strand level. Super great as an instructional tool. I'm trying to think about it.
We've got a couple of other people with their hands up, can we uh, can we turn to them and we can come back to you if you still have questions?
Uh, I don't have any other questions. I thi- I think, I think, Peter, when we come to the next meeting, we need to understand how this rolls up to the strategic measures and all the other measures of the board. And I think.
It's on our agenda for uh, for I think it's March eleventh, it's a retreat, so they'll have the data for us and we can dig in then. All right, Ms. Hirsch.
Uh, sorry.
Turn your microphone off, Mr. Share, when you uh, ramble on about people, thank you. Ms. Hirsch.
So I I know that you briefly mentioned, uh, Mr. Share asked one of my questions about um, if these Link It, the Lincoln's assessments are also being given as well as the star, and I know you said that they are. So I just wanted to ask a quick question, being that the star has always been noted as being, you know, given two to, well, maybe was it three times a year for students, possibly four. Um, and these Link It testing dates weren't listed in our assessment schedule that was given to us in September. Um, I'm wondering how that ties in with the timing for the star tests. Um, and I know that when we were originally given the Link It assessment overview in the, I think it was June of last year, you guys noted that it was a formative assessment process being given prior to in the end of a unit based on curriculum pacing, so just sort of wondering how that ends up equating to three to four times a year? Or if that's how we're gonna be moving forward with Link It?
So Karen, let me take the first thing that you said and make sure that I'm clear on this because perhaps it 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 needs to be refined on the assessment calendar. It is absolutely on the assessment calendar, but it's labeled as GPS benchmark. Because it, because that's what it, Link It is not a test, it's just the the company that created the test. It's the GPS Benchmark Administration's A, B, and C. Is that helpful for for with regards to your first question?
Um, I I can go back and take a quick look, but I know it was noted as being Link It, but it didn't actually have the the testing window on there when we saw it. I feel like it was in October, but I can go back and look.
Okay, and then ju- can you give me the second one again?
No, cuz originally you got, when we were giving it the presentation on Link It, it was noted that these assessments were gonna be used in the formative assessment project prior to an, like, prior to starting a unit or at the end of a unit based on curriculum pla- pacing. As opposed to being like a three to four times a year, just like Star is. So I was just wondering if that has changed how we're utilizing Link It assessments? Or if this is just the start of it and we will be moving it forward and using it in other ways?
Well, Karen, to be honest, I think we're evolving in our thinking of how we're going to use Link It in its entirety. It's a very robust platform. It does afford us lots of opportunities to, again, customize assessments based on when we actually expose students to particular standards. So one of the things that I'm already thinking about and Dr. Jones and I talked about uh, and and Jen Lau as well is, you know, maybe our thinking will change in that instead of giving the benchmark that's created by Link It, maybe it's better if down the road, we create the assessments ourself so that at the end of the first marking period, you give one and it assesses specifically the curriculum that the teachers taught during the first marking period and then it could be truly used as a progress monitoring tool. Is that helpful?
Would that replace Star then at some point if you're looking to use it as a, that type of benchmarking? I'm just trying to see.
No, cuz Star is a universal screen, it's not comparing apples to apples.
Um, and then the other question, I know we, I I had asked this and and you might not have the answer yet, but um, we were only shown uh, results from grades two to five, and I know originally we were told this is also gonna be getting, giving it to the middle schoolers. Has it been given to them yet?
Yeah, Dr. Caraballo, I don't know if you want to jump in on this, but I I can confirm that the middle schools uh, did do uh, the Link It assessment. And I imagine we will share that data out, uh, correct, Dr. Caraballo, in March as well?
I'm muted. Am I still muted?
No, we can hear you, Anne.
No, you're muted.
Now we care.
No, you're muted.
The middle schools have only given Link It once, they gave um, only one assessment so far.
Okay.
When they give all of them, then we will be able to report out on.
And so when we get those more updated reports, will we also getting the star reports that we can compare? I'm, I just want to make sure that, you know, that that the results from the should both are showing that we're, we're moving forward because this report showed with the Link It data, at least in the winter, that it looked like we are hitting our benchmarks, which is great, um, even amongst uh, you know, without the COVID slides, so I just wanted to see if if they aligned with the results we were seeing from Star.
Yes, we had hoped to close the star window um, on Friday, but because of the weather, we have groups of students that can't take the test right now. And I'm not a real big fan of giving the star remotely, so we're kind of hoping the weather improves and that we have students in school. That's up to Dr. Jones tomorrow and we can actually close out the window. If not, it's gonna have to push back into next week, Karen.
Okay, no, no, so so, I'm sorry, I didn't need to interrupt.
We also wouldn't compare both of them, they're two different, two different information assessments. So we can look and see how there are students are progressing with Star on the universal benchmark and then we can look at the Link It results and see how they're doing. And um, depending on that particular, those particular standards that are, that we want them to be successful with by the end of the year.
No, I I knew that they were testing for different things, but if we're seeing growth on both sets of tests, then it shows that we're doing something right, that we're not having the COVID slide. So that's, I was just looking to see overall, not in the the specifics, to see if we're moving forward in both ways, to make sure that our students are accessing learning, whether they're physically in school or at home or in a hybrid manner, that they're being, they're able to access um, their academics and their education in the way that's being attended, uh, intended. So um, thank you for that and I will pass the mic to the next.
Great, thank you, Ms. Olson.
Um, thank you both for that. I, uh, first of all, thank you, Mark, for including the Remote Learning Academy. And and it is great to see, you know, that we are hitting those benchmarks or at this point, you know, that the, as was stated, that we are as a district generally doing all right based on, based on all all things considered. So that's good news. When um, when the middle school results come out, do you know if we'll be able to separate remote learning? I know that we, it's middle schools doesn't technically have a remote learning academy, they just sort of push into the classroom. But do you know if we're able to see how remote learners are doing as well, is that a possibility?
Jen Lau, can we disaggregate the data that way?
I I'm taking copious notes about the questions and the areas of interest that the board is expressing tonight.
I know that might be tricky because, like I said, it's not like a school in and of itself, like they're pushing into the classrooms. But if possible, be nice to see how our upper grades are doing as our remote learners are doing in the secondary schools as well.
Right, the the only uh difficulty is that students are moving back and forth.
Yep, yep, quite a bit, yeah.
Do you call a remote student, you know? It's, I'll figure out a way.
Yeah, yeah, if possible, if possible, that would be helpful. And one other thing, oh, just in terms of the, just in terms of the teacher that had spoke, that spoke earlier and expressed her her questions at the at the uh, I'm, it's late, I'm losing my, I'm losing the words. Open comment, public comment, whatever is. You know, it it does seem from what you're presenting that there are a lot of purposes. You know, for the, for for this, for these assessments, that that they serve multiple purposes. I would just ask that we be really clear with the teachers now that they know this is, you know, the ones that are in the classroom with our students now saying this is what this actual, this is what this purpose is for you right now, that they, that they can, that they understand that, that we're, that we're communicating that clearly to our educators. I think that's important.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure if that was a a question, Megan, but I can tell you that all all of the principals are working diligently with their staffs to make sure that the uh, the Link It understanding is growing, building by building. The one thing that is, you know, and I hate to beat the dead horse, but the one thing that does hamper any professional learning progress is the limited amount of time that teachers actually have this year to to do the professional learning. And I think Carol Sutton spoke earlier about um, the teachers' desire to have more early release days so that they could have professional learning time brought back in. So um, you know, it's it's a balancing act this year for sure, but principals are actively working on making sure that their staffs understand the importance of Link It, how to utilize it, and then ultimately how to talk to parents about it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Downey.
Well, Mark just gave the perfect segue into my question about um, how to talk to parents about it. And I know I'm, I'm really happy to see that you all have become much more comfortable with it, you're finding all the great features of it. I think it's gonna be a great tool and I know it's not necessarily right now, but do we have a timetable for how we're gonna start sharing this information with parents? How parents are gonna be able to use it? Will it be part of report cards? I don't know, what is the thinking on using this um, in terms of parent communication and involvement with their students?
I I think the first step, Christina, is identifying what's a reasonable release date. When we feel, when, you know, when the superintendent feels confident that the schools are in a position to be able to have those conversations across the board uniformly. Once we do that, and I imagine we could do that in the in the early spring. Once we do that, then I think it'll be important to get the feedback from the parents after they actually get it in their hands as to whether or not this is something that's useful for them. If it's, if it's something that they're gonna crave more information on and we have to tweak the parent report? Or is it that they 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 realize that for us, and we've emphasized this over and over again, that this really is an instructional tool? So it, the results aren't going to look a lot like traditional standardized assessment results. So um, I I guess the the long and short of it is, we're we're focusing on a spring release. And hopefully spring is around the corner.
Hopefully, thank you.
All right, not seeing any other questions, uh, thank you all for this. It sounds like this is a promising tool that's already paying off and hopefully will continue to pay dividends into the future. With that, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is the update on special education, specifically preschool and the Community Connections Program.
Okay.
But I'll kick it off, this is Mary. We're here tonight to present to you the two programs that, as Carol said, bookend our special education services. Amy De Nicola Hickman is here to speak to you about the preschool program and Diane Chia-Peta Fox will talk to you about our Community Connections Program. The plan right now is we're hoping to come in at around fifteen minutes in presentation. I would ask if you could keep your questions till the end and we'll take questions on both programs when um, Amy and Diane are finished. So um, Amy will start with our three to five-year-old preschool program and then Diane will come in with the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old Community Connection Program. Amy?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amy De Nicola Hickman. I am the Preschool Special Education Administrator. I wanted to give you a brief background first, and the preschool program is required through IDEA, which is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for special education eligible students. Parents, pediatricians, community preschools enter the Connecticut First to Three Program, they initiate a preschool referral to the special education process. Referrals to this process are made throughout the school year, which is very similar to any other grade level. However, students with disabilities may enter the program upon their third birthday. IDEA requires students with disabilities to receive support and services alongside their typically developing peers. The Greenwich Public Schools Preschool Program achieves this requirement through a lottery process for typically developing preschool age students. And these students pay tuition for the preschool program. So you'll see on this first slide, um, it is our preschool enrollment in classroom seats. We do have a small number of students who only attend for a um, for speech sessions and do not take up a preschool seat, as we would call it, which is in our five-hour program. In this um graph, the blue is the peer mentors or the lottery um, students and the red is the students with IEPs or students with special needs. And you will see um, from twenty fifteen to present, there is a great increase. And we continue to grow in the number of students with IEP here in our district. Um, the number of peer mentors, I just wanted to mention on this slide is um, for this particular year, um, is slightly um impacted by the COVID restrictions that we're having. We do have one classroom that is on remote, um, so it really would be nine more students there um, in the blue, but we do have a classroom on remote. If you can go to the next slide. Um, the next slide really explains what we call rolling enrollment for preschool. Uh, what what we've done is giving you the data of where we begin in the beginning of the school year and where we end up as far as enrollment. Because students with special needs are mandated to begin, they're receiving their students on the date of their third birthday, the enrollment numbers change dramatically throughout the school year. So using an October uh, enrollment report alone, it really is not enough to help us determine the projected enrollment. I believe this year, the October says sixty-three students. We were right about there. We were right about there, we were correct, but that changes very, very quickly. We also use the historical trend of the number of children throughout the school year that we enroll. So if we take a look at the, using the average, the average amount of students that we enter is approximately 28.5. So you can't have a half a child, so we'll say 29 students. This school year, or let's start with 2019, actually, I'm sorry, they started with 53 children in seats. By January 1st, we had 62 children in seats. And by the end of the school year, we had 85 students in seats. So the difference is 32 students that we added from September to June with students with special needs into the classroom. This year, we began with 59. By January 1st, we're at 67, and we are projecting 93 based on the number of referrals we have by the end of the school year. You can go to the next slide. So how does the preschool program recommend the number of classrooms necessary for budget? I use, well, we use the charts that I've just shown you to project the number of students from September to June for the, for the students who have to be added by their third birthday. We currently have the number of students with special needs in each classroom is six. The number of lottery students is nine. So if I know that we had a 59 known students in, for 2020, 2021, in the beginning of the school year, and I add the 28.5 or 29 students, I would have projected out to approximately 87.5 or 88 students. So we're very close to where we projected, as far as where we would end this school year. Okay. We provide a very high-quality program that meets the individual developmental needs of all our students, as demonstrated by the achievement of their benchmarks. The Early Childhood Outcomes Annual Performance Report is for our students with special needs. We also have the Connecticut Documentation and Observations for Teaching System, and the, and the Connecticut Early Learning Development Standards that we use for all students. This chart, chart represents Greenwich Public Schools' achievement against the state target. And I'm happy to say that, again, we have far exceeded the state, state target in eight out of eight indicators. I do want to explain what the indicators mean, as you're looking at this slide. Increased regular education placement. A regular education placement is the least restrictive environment, or the general education classroom. In order for a classroom to remain a general education classroom, you must have at least 50% of the students who are typical peers. A, when you look at decreased segregated placements, a segregated placement would be a full classroom of students with special needs. We are measuring both social emotional skills and use of knowledge and skills, as well as meeting the appropriate behaviors that you would for a typical developing child. So on here, for these scores that we achieved below 80%, the 70s, those are the places where we are continuing to work on our goals for a strategic improvement plan. However, they far exceed the state and target. You can go to the next slide. We have many achievements due to the tremendous staff that I have, and I want to make sure that I say that, because certainly they are working tirelessly to ensure that our youngest learners are achieving all of their benchmarks. They're amazing. But we have met all strategic improvement planning goals across the last five years. These plans included goals in literacy and social emotional learning. They also built an entire growth motor program for every preschool class, which is morning movers, first thing when they arrive to school. We are very, very proud to say that the parent surveys for preschool remote learning were very favorable, especially about the staff who were working with the families. The professional development that we had planned for last year, despite the remote situation, was implemented, and it supported teaching and learning for both certified and non-certified staff. We have a group of instructional assistants, and we ensure that they receive the same training that the teachers are receiving in order to implement the program within the preschool. That's all for me, I'm gonna hand it over to Diane.
Thanks, Amy. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. I'm gonna talk, my name is Diane Fox. I am the Program Administrator for Community Connections, and for Windrose, and for Homebound and Community-Based Instruction. Community Connections is a new assignment for me. I am enjoying working with those students and with the staff at Community Connections. And I did produce the board report for you. I just wanted to highlight a few things about what's going on this year for Community Connections. First, first and foremost, I wanted to talk a little bit about our new location. So I call it our new old location, because we were at Millbank many, many years ago, and now we're back at the Millbank Building, which, as you all know, is the small building that's located right in front of Julian Curtis School on Millbank, and it is a great facility for us, it's great. The location is wonderful in the sense that it is centrally located to all sorts of resources for the students to access, both with recreation and with job opportunities and things like that. So we are looking forward to getting back to a, a time where we're not in remote learning, or we're in COVID times, so we could take advantage of all those great opportunities. I also want to review with you some of the highlights from the report, including the change in special ed law, our COVID response at the school, recreation connections with outside agencies, and then talk a little bit about the students in our program. So if we can go to the next slide. Thanks. In the summer, this past summer, there was a law passed from the Federal Court, Connecticut Federal Court, changing special education law in Connecticut. So now, students who were eligible for participation in Community Connections, students who are 18 to 21-year-olds, this lawsuit has now enabled them to be able to access IEP services and related services until their 22nd birthday. Typically, what we, what students would do is the, the school year that they turned 21 would be the last year that they would be in the Community Connections Program. Based on this lawsuit, there were, the students are now eligible until their 22nd birthday. So the district's response and compliance with the CDC directive, we contacted and advised the former students and their, and their parents of the students' continued eligibility. Seven students were impacted by this decision. Currently, one student has returned to Community Connections, and one is soon scheduled to return. Next slide. Thanks. So there's been, you know, a few changes due to the COVID response over at Millbank. And one, obviously, one of the big things that we're doing now is virtual lessons. Just so you know, the students at Community Connections attend four days in person and one full day remote, which is Wednesday, so the, the facility can be cleaned. Currently, we have six families and students who have decided that they are more inclined to be on full remote this year, which provides its own set of challenges. However, the faculty and staff of the Community Connections Program and the people providing related services are really working beautifully to provide those kind of services and a program for students. So we have virtual classes that we're offering, including fitness, social emotional learning. We have Level Up, which is an outside group that comes in to present classes. And Ableist is presenting a healthy relationships class. We have our related services, speech OT and social work, who are presenting both in-person to some students and, and virtually in individual and small group settings, which has been working great. What has been new this year that teachers have implemented is daily social groups between the in-person and the remote learners. It's their way of trying to make the remote learner still feel connected and still have an opportunity to socialize with their peers who are coming to school on a day-to-day basis. In addition, the teachers are providing students, every student that comes to Community Connections, with a daily personalized schedule. And in those schedules are links for the students to access all of their activities of the day, whether it's the social group, or an independent living, or an ADL lesson, or a related service. So the teachers have been really working on individualizing exactly what students are working on to coincide with their goals and objectives, and exactly what it is that they need. In addition, we have our transition coordinator, who gives weekly groups, weekly group lessons to the students to talk about trans, transition-related issues that they may be facing. The next piece I want to talk a little bit about is, as you know, our 18 to 21-year-old program, we're working on transitioning them to what's going to happen out, after they finish school. So working in vocation or jobs is a big, important piece of what we do at Community Connections. But as you can imagine, we've had to really pivot on what we're doing, because we've lost many job sites due to the COVID pandemic. You know, some students have lost positions due to reduced hours, or just for safety factors, we've had to really kind of change and pivot. So what we did as a team, and with the support of, of all of our colleagues in the district, we've come up with some great activities for our students, where they are kind of in, in conjunction with what everybody's doing, is lending a helping hand to help everybody achieve. With our COVID situation and with remote learning, our students also did that, and in turn, got to work on some jobs that were appropriate for them and, and super important for us. For example, they worked for the Board of Education, packing up the art supply packages for all of the elementary school students. As you know, the students can't share art materials anymore, so we had reached out to that department, and they said, yes, we definitely have a need, we need to supply, pack up all these packages for the elementary students, and our students gladly went over to the Board of Ed over a period of time as those materials came in and packaged them for distribution, which is great. They also did the same for music equipment, they created schedule boards for pre-K, desktop organizers for remote students, and they're even participating in some training on how to use the town's ADP payroll system. So that's been a real great partnership with the Board of Ed. Some of our students work at the high school and the media center, re-shelving books. We have a volunteer paraprofessional, and some are working in the main office. In addition, we've had to pivot from our competitive employment to more volunteering opportunities. And as you may be aware, that we have a great relationship with Filling in the Blanks in Norwalk, and our students from Community Connections have gone up there to assemble weekend food bags for the students from all of Fairfield County, and then, you know, as you know, a number of our students are recipients of those food bags. So it's another way to pay it forward. We also have established a new relationship with a food pantry in Porchester, and they're also doing some assembly work at their facility at Millbank, putting, assembling packages for them. In the future, we're looking to bring in some more task boxes for students to use, to still continue their vocational training. Next slide. Thanks. Again, another big piece of Community Connections is recreation. But as you can imagine, due to our COVID pandemic, we're really having a hard time with really fully implementing a robust recreational program. But the teachers have really been thinking out of the box and done some creative planning for the students. And students and parents both are very pleased with some of the recreational opportunities. So as I mentioned before, we have the social group, the remote social group between the in-person and remote students daily. And we brought back swimming, which we hadn't done in many, many years with Community Connections students because of the job sites, but we brought it back as a recreational activity. At this point, it's on hold, but we did have a lovely time this fall, taking advantage of the Greenwich High School pool, which was wonderful. Teachers have developed, Millbank Movie Days and Friday field trips have been changed to be a little bit safer, you know, for the students, but we still have them. We're doing more outdoor activities when the weather, when the weather is cooperating with us, like field trips and sports. And then we also bring in some virtual workouts, like Zumba, and some exercise activities for the students. And that's been received very well by both students and families. We also collaborate with a number of outside agencies, so most of these will sound familiar to you. They were familiar to me when I started working, you know, with this, with Community Connections. But we've also added in a few others, again, just to sort of pivot and think out of the box to bring some new opportunities for the students of Community Connections. So we've always worked with Bureau of Rehabilitation Services and Department of Developmental Services, DDS, and BRS, as partners, planning partners for our students, and a way to help transition them for what they, what to expect after they leave Greenwich Public Schools. And that's continuing, continuing to go on, which has been great. Ableist is still a partner of ours, and Goodwill Industries has a job shadowing program that we've, we do use. The Kennedy Center provides us with travel training. However, obviously, we're, we're in COVID times, so we're not really able to access our transit or our transportation as we have in the past, but that is something that's been available to us. We have Project Search at the Greenwich Hospital internship that's presented to us by Ableist. And then we have some students who are, you know, becoming recipients of services from Greenwich Department of Human Services, so they've been a great partner. We also have students taking classes at Wright Tech, which is another partner of ours at the Career Academy. And even a few students who are doing the Nora Community College High School Partnership Program. We have a future plan of bringing in for some first aid and CPR training, and there's a few other trainings that we have in mind to bring for the students, which has been great. Next slide. Lastly, this is just kind of to give you an idea of how many students we have. As I mentioned, we have six on remote right now, we have 22 students total. And as you can see, we have the age ranges and the breakout of how many students per age. As you can see, we have nine 20-year-olds at this point. And, you know, with the new law, it will see if that becomes an impact on the program in the future. But in the meantime, the, the students are wonderful, the teachers are tireless, and the powers that help us out have been great, and, and we really can't thank you guys enough, the Board of Ed and everybody else who's been supportive of this program to help keep us going, and, and I really have enjoyed the opportunity, and I'm, I'm learning every day with the teachers, it's just been great. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you both, super informative. First was really thrilled to see the picture of Darla Daniels in the, in the pre-K pages. Both my kids had Miss Daniels, it's a phenomenal program, truly prepares the, the students in it for what's coming next. And Community Connections, this may be the most in-depth I've ever heard it talked about, which is, which is really nice to hear all the things that you're doing with the, with the students. So thank you for that. Ms. Hirsch, I see your hand.
I wanted to echo Mr. Bernstein and say, this is fantastic. I, I think in all the times I have sat on the other side of the table at Board of Ed meeting, I don't think I've ever heard Community Connections actually fully be discussed as a program, so that's fantastic. I also appreciated the update on our preschool program, so thank you so much for the in-depth report. I did have a quick question on the preschool program. You know, on average, do you know how many students in Greenwich qualify or refer to our preschool program via birth to three per year? And out of those number of students, how many are actually attending our preschools?
Let me just look very quickly, because there is a chart in the board report on page six, top of the page, it says resident preschool students evaluated for special education. So it gives you the number of what we call initial evaluations, that would be for preschool, initial evaluation. The number found eligible for their IEP, the number from a birth to three agency, and then the number from community schools or parent referrals. So last year, we had 57 evaluations. 96% were found eligible. 63% were from birth to three agency, 37% were from community schools and parent referrals. It was a bit lower last year from community schools, I would definitely say, because the schools were closed in the spring for preschool. It's typically a bit higher and closer to that 50, 50% or that 40, 60%.
But so out of those, for instance, 57 that you just pointed out, how many of them actually take advantage and tend our preschool program?
I would say 90%.
I was curious, and I just was curious, because you also noted the transition process from, you know, to And I just was curious because you also noted the transition process from, you know, to kindergarten was revived in nineteen twenty. And I know that you said that you haven't had the chance yet to sort of see how that transition process has gone. Do you know, you're planning to survey the teachers or to see if if those revisions were working well?
Right. So we did send out a second survey in the fall this year to complete the changes to the process, which were things like sending a virtual folder of the children's work, work samples. As in preschool, that would be pictures of things that they've built, drawn, created projects that they've done. It's also videos possibly of the children who are participating in the literature circle or sitting at the table, working on a speech and language call. And so we put some of those things into place for this coming year for the children to have those little virtual folders, not just sending paper over to the elementary school. We've always had sharing meetings with the elementary school, which is where our elementary teachers and preschool teachers get together to talk about each particular student who is coming and transitioning to K. However, we did them virtually last year. What I got back from principals, assistant principals and staff was that that was very helpful because there was not as much travel time that needed to be done. And so people were able to spend more time talking about children and less time trying to travel around to all the different buildings. So we put that into place as well. We also did something which was just an organizer for each group to kind of comment on how the meeting went, who was responsible for what as they were moving forward so that they had an action plan. And that also seemed to be helpful in the process. So we, we put all of those three things into place for this coming school year.
Oh, so that's fantastic. And on another positive note, I heard, you know, saw that you were discussing the Listening Circle, which was, you know, a support for parents.
Very successful.
That it was. I'm, I'm really amazed to me. I mean, family engagement is so key and so important, especially for parents with students with additional needs. I was just wondering, I know we got a grant for it from the Alliance as you. Have you considered, considered working with kindergarten or elementary schools to sort of create a version of the Listening Circle for some of these families as they move forward? Just such a great idea.
Yes. So one of, actually, one of the preschool staff was just on a few minutes ago listening. So if she's still listening, Sabrina Mata was one of those people who did write the grant and we are expanding into the elementary schools and trying to offer that. We found it to be very, very successful. We truly believe in parent engagement and training, which is something that we do provide, not only on a monthly basis with parent chats, both during the day and the evening, but also on an individual basis for children who are requiring things at home. Everyone has parenting needs and questions. And so we do try to do that on an individual basis for all of our children.
I would love to recommend, you know, that there's some way we can connect, you know, you with the parents in CAC to share that service going forward for a lot of the families or, you know, for our special education. You know, through PTA council or something because they can be helpful and also helping with that. It was, I'm so impressed. So thank you for your incredible report on both, both ends of our spectrum, our youngest and our oldest learners. So thank you.
So just one more piece is that the Listening Space was placed in Mary's Special Education Newsletter last week so that other parents can take a look at that from other grade levels.
Extra kudos. So thank you.
No problem.
All right, Mr. Kelly.
Amy, impressive work. I very happy to hear what you're involved in, what you're doing. I do a little volunteer work myself with the older kids so I can more relate to Diane than than you, Amy. But Diane, that is, you got it going on. Holy smokes. Well done. Very impressive. As you know, I, I do a little bit of work with internships and some work with the older kids, some sports-related stuff. But but I was good off of my services. If anything you possibly need that I could do, please reach out. But certainly you sound like you got it going on. So keep doing what you're doing and I'm happy to help if you want to just contact me for anything. So thank you.
Thank, thanks, Joe. I really appreciate it. And, you know, this program's been going on for a number of years. So it's been a program that's kind of morphed and developed over the years. I'm just happy to be part of it and to bring a different, you know, kind of viewpoint into it. And, and like I said, everybody works really, really well together. It's nice, it's nice to be part of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Downey.
I'm guessing, I'm not sure. I think this is probably a Mary question. Or Amy. So we have these, these kids from birth to three who are evolving and they're showing up over the course of the year. But with our ratios of students in the classrooms are six to nine, how do you wind up doing the, how do you, you know, how do you manage your classroom sizes? Because you've got this evolving group of kids who you don't really know necessarily when they're going to show up in terms of your staffing. And I'm just trying to kind of think it through how it all works.
This has always been a very difficult process for everyone to understand, which is why I did the student projection chart for you so that you can see. We really have to base it on looking at the trends and the numbers that we received over the last, I have ten years of data. So, you know, how, you know, how many children we've been receiving. Birth to three does give us a heads up about three months in advance of any parent who is willing to sign off for confidentiality reasons that they're ready to go to transition. So that's why I know that we are going to end up somewhere around ninety-three students. Needs because we have the next three months of children with birth to three. We're getting a lot of twins. Oh, my goodness. So that doubles it. But we, we do, we do have that information from birth to three. And we do know that because we run about fifty-fifty with the community and the trends, that's how we, 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 we look at the numbers. Now, as far as the classrooms go, you know, best practice is to try to balance them out, just like you do in elementary school, boys and girls, threes and fours. We do like the model of of the mix of three to fours because we do have the four-year-olds giving some real nice models to the three-year-olds who are coming into school. And so we, we do have to look at that as we're, as we are placing children in a class. We do also look at the level of impact of the disability on the general ed curriculum. We certainly don't want to have six children who are very, who have high needs in one room with, with the teacher. So we want to look at how we're kind of balancing that out. So as each child comes in, we really are individually looking at the child and the best placement in which classroom. What we like to do is to be able to project out how many classrooms we need and leave a few seats open in each room. So that as they come in, we're placing them in an appropriate spot and not just.
So you're basically, your ratio is a little different at the start of the year than it is at the end of the year.
Yes. And unfortunately, if we get more children, then our ratio goes higher.
So you're not, but you're not pulling in students, tuition students from the lottery later in the year. You kind of make that assessment at the start of the year because we are turning away a lot of students. I mean, then the number seems to be growing.
Yes. I, I have to say, I'm so pleased we're so popular. But nothing is worse than the week after I have, we have to send the letters out from the preschool office to tell people they don't have a spot. We would love to be able to give all two hundred and two applicants a spot. We really, we really would. That's a big budget implication. So that therein lies with, with that. But you know, we would love to be able to take in all two hundred and two applicants. And I can't tell you the phone calls and the begging and pleading that we've had in the last week or so because the, the letters just went home. This particular year with COVID, we did have some students who declined at the last minute and pulled out. And so we were able to go through our waitlist. We do keep the waitlist very up to date. I'm and then we look, we look at our waitlist as opposed to if a three-year-old girl dropped out, then we're pulling another three-year-old girl from the waitlist. Who's the next one in line? And we did offer to quite a few waitlisted children this year. It doesn't always.
Is it typically balanced between threes and fours?
We try, we try to keep it balanced between the threes and fours as best as we can. You want your four-year-olds to have peers that are of the same age and your three-year-olds to have peers of the same age. You know, you know, we, we try not to have, you know, too many of one age and, and the other. We also have to remember that as the typicals students come in, so those are our lottery students, they can be as young as two point eight years old because they're waiting for their third birthday. So we have children who are two point eight years old in the classroom, which means lots of teaching basic skills, all the things that they need in order, not to just go to kindergarten, but in life. So we're potty training, we are teaching children how to sell feed, we're teaching children how to hang up their coat, you know, where to put their book bag, how to just sit for a few minutes at one activity at two point eight years old, their attention spans are about five minutes. So we're looking, you know, we're looking at, you know, a wide range of, of ages.
Thanks. And just to follow up, your staffing in, in terms of paraprofessionals in the classroom, or is it based on the disabilities? Or do you have a general staffing model that you're using of how many?
Right. So we've used a general staffing model in preschool for instructional assistance, and it's really based on what the National Association for Young Children would also recommend as far as the number of children in the room and then the number of children with special needs. And we look at it that way. So we have one full-time assistant in all of the non-magnet schools, which are the five-hour days. And then two point seven assistants as well.
And and where?
In each classroom in the non-magnets. So that's OG and North Street.
I'm sorry. So it's one or two point seven?
Sorry, it's okay. It's three people, but it's one full-time assistant and two point seven assistants. They come in.
Two point seven, two, not a two, okay, two.
Come in with the children, go out with the children.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And then in magnets, it's two full-times because they have an extended day. And they receive specials at the end of their day. And for that extended day, we need coverage for the students who stay for the extended day to go with the PE teacher or the music teacher, et cetera. That's when our teacher is taking their lunch and their prep and attending to all of the collaboration meetings that need to occur.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, Ms. Holson.
Yes, thank you for that really thorough report. And I'm sorry to be off camera. My own four-year-old just woke up, so I'm sitting in like a pitch black room. So wouldn't matter if my camera was on, he wouldn't see me. So, but I just, I just wanted to say too, I kind of echo a little bit of what Ms. Hirsch said. I, I'm really excited about the family engagement component. And, you know, I think that, you know, we're understanding more and more, family engagement isn't just about, is, is really about partnering with the families and you know, and building that communication, which, which is what, which is what's happening here, you know. And I, I think it was mentioned through, it was through the Alliance or was funded through the Alliance originally, like the families as partners in learning. And I hope that that, that that program and, and that that continues and we see more and more of that because clearly the, the benefits are are paramount to the success of our, of our, of our children. So I'm happy to see that and I hope to see more of that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that'll wrap up this item. Thank you, everybody. Good update. And we appreciate the hard work going into it. So our next item will be the digital learning update, Mr. Ting. Welcome back.
Good evening, members of the board, fellow members of Cabinet, GPS staff, students and all other meeting attendees. Thank you for staying with us so late into the evening. I'm Michael Ting, CTO of Greenwich Public Schools. And my job is to help people with their computers. What I'll be talking about tonight is an update to the board in the areas of technology and digital learning. We will be discussing the daily update report, which can be found on our Board Docs website. For those that don't have a copy of the report, if you would like a copy, you can go to the GreenwichSchools.org website, click on Board of Education, then roughly in the middle of the page, look for meeting agendas and then click on the Board Docs link. Now, before we begin, I'd like everyone to think about where we were technology-wise one year ago. A year ago, we didn't have remote learning, we didn't have video conferencing, and we didn't have the option whether to attend school in person or fully remote. In just one year, we've seen rapid change across the school district in many aspects of instruction and infrastructure. And when I say we, I mean, all of us, the board, school staff, students, parents, all of us have experienced this change and have adapted, learned and grown in some way. I look around today and I see teachers and students collaborating online, classes being streamed to students at home, students raising their hands virtually, teachers taking attendance with Google Meet, fifteen hundred students enrolled in full-time remote learning, and many other things that represent how far we've come as a school district in just one year. Now, tonight, we're looking at exactly where we are with technology in the school district. The daily update report is a thirty-page document with a lot of information. And if you're interested in details such as our mobile device management platform, what generation iPad we're using, where we use Macs versus where we use Windows computers and the like, I recommend that you go to our website and read the report in its entirety. At this time, I'm not going to go through the report page by page, but I will give you the highlights. So first of all, it's important to know that the concept of digital learning goes beyond any single department at Greenwich Public Schools. I often get questions about certain aspects of digital learning that I do not oversee. Because when people think about digital learning, they naturally think technology. But digital learning is about much more than just the technology. I mean, there's a lot of thought and planning that's put into place before any technology is implemented, before an iPad is handed out to an elementary student, before you receive your login credentials to an app in the digital toolbox, and a lot of coordination between departments goes into that. So my piece of the puzzle consists of infrastructure and hardware. Now, what does that mean exactly? Basically, it means network security, availability, servers, workstations and devices. So now I'd like to take a few minutes to review the current state of infrastructure and hardware in the school district. As I said earlier, for the purposes of this meeting, I'm not going to go through all of this in detail, but rather just give you the highlights. So there are nine areas here to speak to. So number one is our district internet usage. Internet usage went up by a factor of two. That's roughly double that of the year before. Now, this was expected and bandwidth requirements were tested ahead of time, making this a non-issue. Furthermore, at current bandwidth usage rates, we're not in danger of running out of bandwidth, nor will we experience cost increases in this area. Number two, student devices. We use iPads in elementary and Chromebooks in secondary. There are approximately fifty-five hundred iPads and six thousand Chromebooks in the school district. Number three, device management. For iPads, we use a platform called JAF Pro. For Chromebooks, we use the built-in management tools of the Google platform. Number four, classroom computers. We use the Mac platform for elementary schools and middle schools. And we use Microsoft Windows at the high school. Now, at this point, you may be thinking that you're going to need a table to list all of the various grade levels, classroom computer platforms, student device platforms. And you might be thinking, how can we support so many different types of devices at the same time? And you would be right to think along these lines. So we recognize that these technology stacks need to be streamlined for efficiency. And that is an entire discussion in itself. For now, know that we do see and acknowledge the possible For now, know that we do see and acknowledge the possibly overly complex model that we're currently using. Number five, classroom displays. So the school district standardizes on the Smart Board platform. Number six, elementary remote learning hardware. We take feedback seriously. And upon hearing the deficiencies with using an iPad as a primary device for teaching remotely, Dr. Jones and her cabinet began initiative to upgrade our elementary teachers to a proper laptop. I'm happy to say that we were able to get to a place where we provided every elementary teacher with a MacBook Air at the start of the school year. Number seven, secondary remote learning hardware. So during the summer of 2020, we installed camera and microphone equipment in every middle school and every high school classroom. Big thanks to Tony Brenna and his team for going above and beyond during this time to ensure that everything was ready before the start of school. Number eight, Google Meet. So before the start of the school year, we knew we wanted to use Google Meet as our remote learning communications platform. However, we had several challenges ahead of us that needed resolution before that could happen. Long story short, we took on a huge project to merge our staff and student Google domains into a single domain, which was one of the most technically challenging and difficult projects ever undertaken by this department, but it had to be done. Big thank you to Chris D'Angelo and Ganesh Nair for pulling this off almost flawlessly in such an aggressive timeframe with no data loss and minimal interruption in service. Now, I say almost flawlessly because who remembers having to change their password four times in a row back in August? Moving on. Cybersecurity. The school district's first cybersecurity training initiative was kicked off in October of 2020. In four months, over 1,200 GPS staff have taken and completed security training. As this was the first training offering, we focused on the training process itself and assigned some of the more simple but still important security topics. We hope to expand on this training next year if the BET approves the funding in this area. Now that we've covered the technology that's currently in use across the school district, let's talk about one of the problems we're seeing with tech in the school district. Specifically, the problem with the Chromebook platform in the middle schools and the high school. Now, there's a lot of detail in the daily update report, which includes various platform specifications, part numbers, processor speeds, et cetera. Please refer to the report if you would like to read about these details.
Mike, before you go on, do you have slides for us? Or you're, you're just going to refer back to the report, which is fine. I'm following, but I just want to make sure if you had slides, if you wanted to share them.
Oh, I do not have slides. I'm simply referring to the written report.
No worries. Thank you. Following along.
You're welcome. I'm going to summarize the problem by saying that the current device is inadequate in terms of computing power for the demands of the school district, specifically with regard to the Google Meet platform. Simply put, running a Google Meet ties up so much of the resources of the device that it makes doing other things on the device at the same time difficult to nearly impossible. With this in mind, it's easy to see why so many students use a second personally-owned device for school. Now, how can we solve this problem? The report offers four potential solutions. Not that these are the only solutions available. However, they are presented as several potential solutions to the problem at hand. The four solutions are option one, use the same device, upgrade the processor. Option two, use the same device, upgrade not just the processor, but all the specs of the machine. Option three, upgrade to a Windows laptop. And option four, which is upgrade to a Mac laptop. Now, the first three options have costs associated that are roughly in line with the current budget, maybe slightly higher. The fourth solution, the Mac laptop, is significantly more expensive. However, keep in mind that the Mac laptop is also a significantly more powerful device. If cost were not an issue, the Apple laptop is the clear choice here. It's important to mention that this information is being presented at a time when no decision has been made in this area. And in fact, we are hoping to get the board's feedback on this before moving forward. There are still some big questions that need to be answered before we can make a decision one way or another. Questions such as, how is the school district going to fund these increased costs? This is an obvious question as cost is a big factor in any decision. Can we solve this problem another way, maybe by using different software? For example, would a different video conferencing platform such as Zoom be less resource-intensive than Google Meet? If it is less resource-intensive, how difficult would it be to implement in the middle of the school year when we've already come so far with Google Meet? What is the overall timeline considering the budget cycle? I mean, it's budget time right now. In fact, Peter, Tony, Sean, and I were in budget meetings with the BET just this morning. So given that we already have a budget set for fiscal year 2122, any change that would need to be included during budget planning this time next year would not take effect until the year after that. So timeline is a big question mark. Now, I know I've talked a lot and I promise I'm almost done. I would encourage everyone to read Appendix A of the daily update report, which includes the results of the technology survey that was sent to our high school students. We realize that the response rate was relatively low, but that does not necessarily mean that the results from questions like, if you could choose any device, would change from the overwhelming response of Apple laptop with a larger sample set. And that takes us to the end of the report. So what did we learn here? I would say the top three takeaways from this would be, number one, technology is hard and we make it harder on ourselves by supporting so many different types of devices. Number two, we need to upgrade the secondary student device platform and need to figure out how to do that in the most effective manner. And number three, our high school students apparently love Apple laptops. And this makes me feel old-fashioned as I'm a Windows guy myself. And that brings us to the end of my talk. Thanks for listening and I'm happy to take questions at this point.
Mike, thank you so much. You know, huge shout-out to you and your entire team for basically working all summer and preparing for the onslaught of starting the school year. I know even under normal circumstances, getting the replacement laptop ready and, and all the rest, but this year was especially tough. You, you did a lot of advanced planning, you got the network running and, you know, to the point where you knew you could handle the capacity. So just shout-out to the entire team, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
So, you know, I've looked at the, the secondary laptop issue and obviously I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, so I hear it at home. You know, most students who are going, who are, who are doing learning remotely do need two devices if one of them is the, is the school computer. But, but what we know and we've known for years is we sort of have a quasi BYOD situation going on where students are using their own devices. And I guess a question for you is whether we could formalize that in any way that it would bring down the need. I know we're in a three-year replacement for middle school and a four-year replacement for the high school. Whether that would bring down the need to buy additional devices, that's one way to look at it. The other is the nominal cost of moving up to the Intel chip, which your report very clearly shows has a much better capacity than the, than the AMD chip. You know, is incremental. I think it's $25 a unit. So, you know, if we lessen the number of devices we need to purchase and we purchase devices that are incrementally better, you know, I think that leaves us in good shape. I'm a Mac guy, have been for years, but I'm, I'm styling a 2013 MacBook Air right now. So probably need a replacement. And I don't, I don't know that MacBook Airs would be my choice for a middle schooler or high schooler that are taking it in and out of their bag or, you know, moving it around a lot. So anyway, my thoughts, but I'm curious as to where, where we could go on the BYOD question because it is a huge cost to us every year. And, you know, we've heard, we've heard people before say they've got laptops, school laptops sitting in closets and, you know, maybe we don't need to be purchasing everything.
I'm going to answer that question by saying that the change to a BYOD model would be significant and is an entire project in, in of itself with all of the variables and possibilities involved. You know, at present, we're very focused on providing our students with known, stable tech platforms to get us through the pandemic. BYOD is a big change. It's a big project. It's not something we're ready to take on right now at this time.
I guess I do want to push though, Mike, on that a little bit because we do know and I have, one of my kids is using a Surface and the other one is using the school laptop. So we do know there are a lot of kids that are, that are using their own devices. I know it's a challenge from a management standpoint.
Right, right now, it's great that there are some students that are able to run everything that needs to be run on a personally-owned device. I don't know that every student would have that ability to run on their own device. So there is an equity issue, there's, there's security issues, there are support issues. There's, there's a lot to think about.
Well, as long as we're thinking about it, I think is the, the big idea there. All right, Ms. Downey.
I'm going to tandem because Peter read my mind. I have a couple of like smaller questions too, but this whole notion of devices going unused that people say, oh, my kid's got Chromebooks sitting in a closet. Maybe not a full BYOD kind of thing, but suggesting to people that if their students aren't using the school-provided ones, can we have some program or make people aware of the fact that there are students who are struggling with the existing ones? Because if this is a long-term cycle in order to address it, can we get those, those people, capture the X number of them to give them back so that we then have them? And maybe some kids could get deployed two of them. I don't know. Has any thought been given to something like that?
You know, I think we would need some data to pick a direction to go in there. So what we could do is, I mean, what I can tell you right now is, as far as Chromebooks are concerned, there's a 95% take rate, so less than 5% of the students turn down the device. So of those 95% that are currently in the hands of students, it wouldn't be that big of a lift to perform an audit of the usage of said devices. I mean, maybe just check, when was the last time this device was logged in? Times the 6,000 devices and see what, you know, what problem were you trying to solve? Is it really a problem that a lot of these devices are handed out and go unused?
Right, because if that's the case, I think that changes our approach, right? I mean, if a third of them pick a number, yeah, right? I, I think, I think that to me, that seems like a worthwhile use of time if that's a relatively easy thing and then that gives you some data-
Yep.
-to go in a direction.
I'll pull some numbers.
Kind of changing gears, I just want to understand the numbers too because in your report, you make reference to 5,500 iPads and about 6,000 Chromebooks, which is obviously more than the number of students we have. Is it that we have a reserve or for replacements or what? Could you just talk through those numbers?
It includes staff devices as well.
Okay. But I thought the staff, wait, but the staff, the elementary school staff have Apple laptops?
They also have iPads that they were issued before they got the laptops.
Okay, so elementary school staff have, have iPads?
Yep, and all secondary staff have Chromebooks as well.
Oh, okay. And then to the extent we do whatever, let's just say, I mean, I know you said all the kids want an Apple laptop, right? If we ultimately, is there, are there ways for us to purchase things like this or give parents the opportunity to get the preferential educational pricing on something? I, obviously, we have to decide what we're doing, but what options are there? Because those, that's obviously a much more attractive price for an Apple laptop than if you go into the Apple Store, so.
You know, I was going to say that we don't get that big a discount from Apple, even though we purchase in volume. And, you know, we are an educational institution. I think, you know, for, for example, an iPad, they might give us $5 off per unit, but it's not 50% off or anything like that.
Okay. But you're priced for like $800 for an Apple laptop? That's, or is that just because that's kind of the bot, you know, the kind of the basic one? Not the ones that the kids going to college want with every bell and whistle?
Right, $779 is the least expensive model that you can get.
Okay. Okay, no, no, it's just, it's a dilemma, but I would be interested in the data on the usage on the Chromebooks. So I like that, so. But it's about a three, you said about a three-year cycle. So we're basically looking at this for budget cycle that's going to start in a year, not for the upcoming year. Whatever decisions made about the secondary devices.
Yep, if we were going to follow the current budgetary process, that's what the timeline looks like. There might be other options. We don't know at this point in time.
Okay, thanks very much, Michael. Very informative.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Hirsch.
Sorry, had to take myself off mute. Mike, thank you for not just a fantastic report, but for you and your entire staff. I cannot tell you, I, I know the speed with which you guys jump right in and take care of things, whether it's a cybersecurity issue or there's issues with, you know, Google Meet or Zoom or any of the other issues that our students are having. And yes, that means having to sign up for your password multiple times over the summer. You were absolutely, the speed with which you guys handle things and get our students back on track is absolutely fantastic. And I thank you for taking the deep dive into the things that our district truly needs to make sure that our students are getting what they need and our staff is able to deliver it. You know, the issue with Chromebook performance has been raised long before we moved to the remote learning platform of educational delivery. And as you know, we've discussed it many times, many students choose to bring their own devices, mine, mine included. So I will admit that I have two Chromebooks that may not have been used, except for when one of our laptops went down and my daughter had to use it because it didn't really support what she needed to do. So I know I had asked this before, but you know, of the options listed in the report, what is it that you truly feel would allow our students to have the best access to, you know, to their education?
You know, if, if cost were not a factor, and it is a major factor of the options that are listed in the report, my recommendation would be to go with the Apple laptop as it is the fastest, most powerful device. And it runs an actual operating system as opposed to a Chromebook, which means that you can install things like Microsoft Office.
And so do you think that, you know, I was going to say the lifetime on a lap, a Mac laptop seems to last a little bit longer oftentimes in the Chromebook, you know, with the, the update to the iOS and things? So might it possibly be that we get a longer lifespan out of those laptops than versus the Chromebooks? Which I know when my children were using them, oftentimes it would, you know, die within a year.
I would say yes. The Mac laptop is definitely a more robust, better-built device. And, you know, it would be, it would be my hope that if a student were handed a device of that caliber, that they would be more inclined to take care of it. I could be proven completely wrong in this situation. But right now, I could say yes, I would, I would expect that the refresh cycle could possibly be increased from three and a half years to four years or even five years.
That might actually end up, even though the device costs more at the outset, it may still like over time amortize to be less.
Absolutely, yes. We can play with the numbers and see if we can make something work.
And then the other question I know I had asked before, and you know, I know you won't have the answer tonight, is do we know what other districts are using? You know, in, in the Fairfield region, in New York, New Jersey, you know, those that are similar to us.
My kids go to Weston Public Schools and they're issued Chromebooks. And I have heard Tony mention that she was issued a Chromebook in Fairfield.
I mean, I know that during my CAAB call and my CES calls, I will certainly put the question out to see what other districts are using because I think that that would sort of also help us make that kind of decision. But I will also say, I think the other question to ask is, is for some of the staff. I know when my son entered the high school, one of the courses he was taking, he could not access a program on the Chromebook. We ended up having to buy him, or we didn't have to, but we bought him a Mac because he couldn't use the Chromebook- the Chromebook to do some of the editing work that he was doing. So I, I know that there are some apps and things and programs that the staff uses at the high school for classes that may not be accessible on Chromebook. So I don't know if we need to look into that as well. But that's just as an aside, either way, you know, thank you for doing the, the research and the deep dive. I know this is something we've looked into for a long time. And not for tonight, but once we are through COVID and, and you know, are not focused as much on remote school, I know you briefly mentioned it in the report, but screen time, I know it's something that has been a long-term discussion here. We can't really discuss screen time, screen time now, but at some point down the road, I'd love to sort of bring that back to, to the table.
Absolutely. Thank you, Karen.
All right, Ms. Doe.
Okay, ditto on how far we've come. It's kind of amazing. We're almost a year into this pandemic and I think about how seamlessly we went to remote school today for a snow day. And Tony, I'd like to know what you're doing tomorrow. Are we going to be doing that again? Many constituents here want to know. But I just, I think it's incredible. And Michael, I'm so happy you walked us through that because, you know, we all kind of lose sometimes. We just start to expect these things to happen. And it's important to note how far we've come. With that, two things. You are 100% right. It's either people either require two devices and you don't want to see how big my second computer is over here. And so I know that I use two devices throughout my day, or you need a much more robust processor, right? And so, so again, a middle school student who, by the way, did turn his Chromebook back in because I thought not appropriate for us to leave in the closet. So, um, did turn his Chromebook back in and is using a much more, you know, powerful machine. I like the idea that we're all echoing here that we need to do some sort of analysis. We need to make sure that everyone has access to a robust device and, and make sure that there's equity. But if some people are able to provide for that, does that allow us for, you know, the capital to go out and buy better devices for others that can't? And, and with that, Michael, I totally defer to you. I'm a Windows gal too, but I am, you know, I believe we always have to learn from the next generation. So if you think that that's Apple, then perhaps that's the best. With the current budget though, because I don't want to wait two years, which is what we're talking about. If we have to wait for the next budget cycle, when that's, you know, time loss for all these students. The current budget we have there is 2.3 million, right? For the technology?
It's 1.4, 1.35, somewhere around there in DLE capital for student devices.
Okay. And so that is exactly like just replacing the Chromebooks, like what exactly is in that? And can we do we have the ability to rethink that, I guess, that number?
So roughly 75% of the DLE capital budget goes directly towards the purchase of student devices. Off the top of my head, I think it's something like 560,000 per year for six, for Chromebooks and slightly less than that for iPads. I should know this. I just presented this, this morning to the BET, but as Ms. Olson said earlier, it's late and I'm losing the words.
No, no, that's right. And I was gonna say, I mean, you know, if, if we're contracted to do that, then so be it. But if we have flexibility at this point to still perhaps, you know, change courses here and keep, stay within that budget, but perhaps address our needs more quickly. I'd like to look into that.
I can, I can tell you that in a very wise move, Dr. Jones asked us to cancel the Chromebook order for next year, uh, which effectively freed up the $560,000. So we have some flexibility there.
Okay, great. Well, I will stop then right at this point in the evening. Thank you so much.
Mr. Share.
I'm trying to get off mute. Michael, um, I, I wanted to ask some basic questions that weren't in your report.
Sure.
And I want to divide the user base because we have really three different, four different, five different user bases. And I think to talk about them in a really unified way, which your report does a lot, might not be as, help, help us draw the insights that we need to draw. So I want to ask you about the applications, the educational applications that we are using for students in middle school and high school. Which of those applications are not cloud-based? In the app, in the standard application suite for students in middle school and high school, which applications are not cloud-based?
So I am not in charge of the digital toolbox. That being said, I'm pretty sure 100% of the applications that are in the 612 toolbox are cloud-based because there's nothing installed locally on the Chromebook.
Yeah, right. Okay. And for the teaching staff that support those teachers, middle school and high school, what's in their application suite? That is standardized from the district?
So for middle schools, the teachers would have access to a Mac desktop in, in their classrooms. And on that Mac desktop, you would have the smart notebook suite. You would obviously have Chrome with access to the entire G Suite, things of that nature. Now at the high school, the high school is a completely different animal. The high school runs Windows and all of the Windows computers are in an active directory domain. And those Windows computers would have Windows software such as Microsoft Office installed along with the Smart Suite. And obviously Chrome and things like that.
Okay.
But I guess where I'm going with, where I'm going with that is it's, we have a directory service at the high school.
Yeah, I know.
Do not have a directory service for K through eight, and that is a big problem.
I'm not sure I know why that's a big problem, but okay, let me stay with my questions because we can go off in a tangent. And then at the elementary school, for students at the elementary school, we have a set of applications that are all iOS-based, right?
Yes.
Are they allowed to use web-based apps? Are they allowed to use the internet?
So they are allowed to use the internet in a very content-filtered manner. But from what I understand, in the digital toolbox, if there is an app, an actual custom-written app, we would definitely prefer that over the web-based application.
Okay. The, the reason I make that point is, is that for middle school and high school, and I didn't understand what you were saying, but when you were saying about BOD being a heavy lift, what are you talking about? So I, I know about BOD, so you can just explain it to me in, in, in simple form?
Sure.
So from the IT. Why do you think that is a heavy lift? What part of that is heavy lift from your perspective?
For the IT department, there are certain technology stacks that we support and I would consider us experts in. You go to a BYOD model and you start bringing in different platforms, that complicates things quite a bit. For example, at the high school where it's a Windows environment, you now have IT staff that potentially would be supporting Macs, which they might not have seen before.
Okay, that's what we're talking, that wasn't really what we were talking about. Okay, that's what I thought you meant. Okay. So what impediments do you see? Here, here's where I'm going. I don't think we're talking about what we issue to employees. I don't even think that's part of the conversation. I think this conversation is all about what do we issue to students? You know, I, I, I don't understand. I mean, look, I, I, I don't know what the suite, the app, this all driven off the application suite. I think people who live in technology, you know, they kind of live with technology, but they don't actually understand what's involved in managing technology. And you do, I do, because I've been doing it for 30 years. The, the, I get, you have to start with the application requirements. Then the application requirement is going to drive what kind of infrastructure you need. So it always starts with what are the applications that are going to be offered to the end user on the desk, on the desktop? That's going to drive what kind of device you need, because that's going to drive whether you need an operating system and what kind of operating system. Then it's going to drive the device and then it's going to drive the management of the device. But I think what we're really talking about is we have students today at the high school and the middle school who are already bringing their own device. And because there is no application requirement other than a browser, there's no management required by your team. I mean, they come in, they get on the internet, like they get on the internet because our internet is open or they have an access to that. They come in, they open their browser. We have, and I, I bet you, I know you can do this immediately. You can go out and look at all of the IP addresses and see all the people who are logging in. And those devices, those IP addresses are not ours. So we could, you could, you could find out tomorrow morning how many people we have who are doing this. It's in our, it's in our logs on our devices already. And my point is, is that I think what we're not really being realistic about is for a particular target community that you're talking about with the Chromebook. So we're not talking about the little kids who get an, an iPad from us. They're not on the table because they wouldn't, we wouldn't do a BYOD for them. We probably wouldn't do a BYOD for our own employees. So the only universe we're talking about is students in middle school and high school. And, you know, it's already happening. That's the way IT works. And as much as an IT department wants to try to control that, that model went out the window 15 years ago. And, but I understand the problems of a CIO. They want to manage bandwidth. They want to manage CPU. They want, they want to manage it all. But there's other ways you can do that on the infrastructure. And there's also other ways that you would keep the security on the infrastructure because the security is not on the device with the browser anyway. So I'm thinking we have a defined target that we should be looking at. We shouldn't look to try to boil the ocean on this item. And the one we should be talking about is how do we make it, as Peter Bernstein suggested, accept the reality that's already occurring and stop spending money buying devices for kids that don't use them and are going to use their own device. And then, then you can have a debate about what device do you give it? I, I don't, I think people don't really know. The, the education market used to be dominated by Apple. That has gone away. The K-12 market in the United States of $43 billion market. And Chromebook is 60% of the market now and growing. You know, Microsoft is 22%. And I don't know what, with what device, and Apple's now down to 18%. So to Karen Hirsch's question, for us to equip everybody to get to a browser and browser-based applications, which would be the middle school and the high school with a device that's shrinking in usage in K-12, that doesn't sound like the right strategy to me. But, um, and, and it doesn't sound like we have application requirements and say that's necessary. But, you know, hey, we're Greenwich, Connecticut. If people want to, you know, equip kids with $800 laptops, I suppose we could do differently than what the rest of the world is doing, but that doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm not, I guess I want to know the numbers and the data for the students. Don't conflate it with the rest of it. And because that's a separate problem. And then the other one is, I think I'd like to know what the usages of the Chromebooks that we've issued for that community, what percentage is doing that day in, day out over some period of time? Because if we can take that money and repurpose it, because kids are already doing it anyway. It sounds like Tony's already said, don't spend the money until we figure this out. Anyway, you just brought that up. We have 600, 400, $600,000. We're looking to repurpose. I don't know why we don't go down that road because I think that's the de facto situation we're in. Do you have data that indicates otherwise?
Well, the problem that we're trying to solve right now at the present is that the current device is unable to handle the load, specifically unable to handle the load of the video conferencing platform that we're using.
You're saying, uh, Google?
Google Meet. Right. So the thinking was, you know, if we were going to spend a certain amount of money on an upgrade, why wouldn't we upgrade from a Chromebook to a quote-unquote real computer of some sort, whether that be a Windows computer or a Mac? And then in the options that are listed in the report, you know, obviously the Mac with the brand new M1 chip, 15 cores, you know, that is by far and away the performance leader of the pack. It's the most expensive one. But it is definitely the fastest one.
Have you called Google? Let me just ask one question and I'll shut up. There's a reason Google Meets would be co-designed to properly run
Yep.
on a Google Chromebook. Did you call the Google people and they came in and what was their answer?
Their answer was that the specs from our device are too low. Yes, we called Google Support and we brought this issue to light.
What record, what, what Chromebook do they recommend?
They recommended going to a Cellaron-based device, the Intel architecture that's in the report. They basically said that.
Okay, so that's their recommendation of the Google Chromebook to use if you're going to run G Suite plus Google Meets?
Yep, something that has a higher spec than the device that we currently have. I had the same thought, which is Google Meet is a Google product, Chromebook is a Google product.
That's, they, they built it as an integrated product.
Yeah, so this should work. Yep, I had the same train of thought.
Okay, go ahead. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mike. Obviously still some thinking to do there and we're here when you're ready for us. All right, we're going to move on to our action items. The first action item is the GHS Course of Study Guide. I am going to move this item to get it going. I moved that we accept the GHS Course of Study Guide is presented. Is there a second? Ms. Hirsch, thank you. Discussion, I guess, Mr. Mayo, I don't know if there's anything you want to say before turning it over to the board or Ms. Talata?
Okay, here, uh, yeah, a few things that I wanted to say and we took your concerns and your questions seriously. Last meeting at the January board meeting, we did our research. We looked at the French public schools policy on graduation requirements. We looked at the the procedure that was written in 2019. We contacted ACT, get some data from them. We also contacted the Connecticut State Department of Education, get additional information for them about SAT scores and PSAT scores. And we also went into the state statutes to look at the current graduation requirements. And also, there's a nice handout from the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent that has, uh, that breaks down or unpacks the graduation requirements. So we did all that so that we could answer some of your questions or concerns from last time. So I will, uh, I will turn this over to, I have Ms. Nadell, our Director of School Guidance and Ms. Talata, our Vice Principal, and still tell you what we found.
Sure. Thanks, Ralph. Hi, everyone. So we did take your questions and feedback from last month and there are four areas that we wanted to update you on. One of the questions was about the capstone experience. Could we give a little more detail to those who are looking at the Course of Study Guide? So on page six is where that is mentioned. And after going back to the team, we, we, we realized we could actually put a link to what's currently on our Greenwich High School website. It's found on the, under the teaching and learning portion where we actually have, uh, it was last updated in September of 2019, so it does need to be looked at again. But it does describe the capstone experience and what students and families can expect. The second area that we did look at was, we were asked about the ACT writing score, I'm referring specifically to page seven under the graduation performance standards. We were asked if we would consider changing from what we had recommended as a six to a 6.5, because the thought was that that was what would be in line with what we're asking our students to do for the other areas. We found out from going back and looking at ACT writing that a six is actually proficient, a 6.5 would be goal. So to keep in line with the others where we are asking students to be proficient, we are recommending that we, we go with what we originally recommended, which was a score of a six. The third area we looked at was the SAT and the PSAT scores. Greenwich High School uses the proficiency score that is established by the state of Connecticut, which is described, quote, as the second level of achievement on the Connecticut School Day SAT. And a 420 is in fact, it does mean that a student has met the minimum required score for the second level of achievement. So we are recommending to, to keep the 420 as that score. We also found out, or we also said that the College Board publishes growth estimates, which would predict SAT scores based on a student's. PSAT scores, of course, a score of a 420 on the SAT would have a corresponding score. PSAT scores, of course, a score of a four twenty on the SAT would have a corresponding score lower than a four twenty on the PSAT. So requiring a four twenty of our sophomores and juniors on the PSAT is actually a higher standard, which we're comfortable keeping the four twenty for both. And the last point we wanted to make sure we brought back to you was someone had asked about how are we going to get feedback on our current course of study guide? So I wanted to make sure you all know that two years ago, we actually did focus groups. We had students. Look at the course of study guide and give their input on it, which actually helped determine some of the changes we have made since then. Ms. Nadell, as head of our guidance department, also gathers feedback from parents and staff about the course of study guide. And an additional idea we thought that would be pretty simple to do is write on our Greenwich High School website. Where we have the course of study guide posted, we could put a link to get additional feedback from anyone who's, who's using the tool over the next few months to see. How did they use it? What suggestions do they have? So we kind of thought that that might be a neat way to get some feedback.
All right. Any questions from board members? If not, we'll take a vote on moving the item forward. Let's see, oh, Mr. Share.
Um, guys, I just wanted to point out to you and I don't. Think, you know, we necessarily need to deal with it right now, but I want to call something to the attention of board members. Um, when I was doing my homework on this to figure out. If I was really comfortable with what Ralph and Dana were proposing. And also because Karen and I are your representatives on the curriculum committee. There's something you should all be aware of. If you've been on the board for a little while, and Peter has, and those some board members have been here at least three years. You will recall, this is before Ralph was necessarily in the job and Dana were in the job and Tony wasn't here. We used to get. Presentations from Chris, Chris Winters at the high school. The staff, Rick Pietrowski, who was in Dana's job and superintendents. As well as Irene Perici. And what they used to come to us in the board and is, and complain quite vociferously. Is as the state of Connecticut became much more strictly prescriptive. In what courses needed to be taken. Exactly to meet course requirements, they were pointing out to us many, many times, year after year. The state of Connecticut is not doing things in the interest of kids and Greenwich schools. Our kids don't have the flexibility to take what they need to take. They can't pursue their individual interests. The system is much too rigid. They used to bring that to the board as the educators and say that over and over again. It turns out, which I was not aware, but maybe whoever's paying attention to policy. I think, I'm not sure who's on the committee, but who's ever on that committee. The state of Connecticut actually changed the statute. And they did it sometime in the last twelve to eighteen months, and I wasn't aware of this. They heard complaints from school districts. And they have preserved the number of credits required to graduate twenty-five. Uh, they have maintained categories like humanities, STEM, language, et cetera. But they've removed all of the deep prescriptions. Course by course that made the system so rigid and brittle, which is what our administrators and educators were. Uh, complaining to us as the board about that they had hoped the state would fix. Well, it turns out the state has fixed it. But we have retained all of the old system with all of its rigidity. In our graduation requirements. And as a result, it's in our course of study guide. So it, 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 it was obvious to me that it doesn't align anymore. What we have is not what the state requires anymore. And what we have is not what the, those educators at that time wanted. And it doesn't align to our stated strategy of personalized learning and giving students more choice. So I know Ralph and Dana, I asked them about this yesterday. They were kind enough to share with me and confirm the information and also to share kind of their point of view. I don't want to speak for their point of view. Of course, they don't want us to bring this up now because they want to get this catalog out the door. Uh, their statement was, well, let's go study that and look at that in the future. And I understand why they would have that reaction because they've got a tactical thing they need to do right now. Uh, and I don't want to disrupt that, but I think. Uh, we need to fly back over to this target now that the state has relieved us of all these restrictions. And I would suggest that it's something that the Policy Committee and the Strategy Committee, or really the Policy Committee should probably take the lead on it. Uh, but it, it doesn't fit to our strategy anymore. And I think we have to go back and take a look at that. Um, and it's, um, it doesn't change the number of credits. It doesn't change the categories. But we could be giving students much more flexible options to pursue what they want. And align it to our personalized learning goals. If we would adjust that, and that's a governance issue for the board. So I wanted to call that to everybody's attention. Um, it's in the course of study guide. We would be by accepting this course of study guide for another year. Reinforcing that really rigid system. Um, and I think we should change that as quickly as possible so that we give better, we meet the needs of the educators. And we. Align to our strategy for students about personalized learning and personalized choice.
All right. So not seeing any other hands, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. The motion is to accept the course of study guide as presented. Bernstein is a yes. So.
Yes.
Hirsch. Hirsch is muted. Want to give a thumbs up for a yes?
Sorry, computer issues. Um, sure, yes.
Are you, are you a yes? Okay, Danny?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Sorry. Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm with Peter on this one. I think we need to spend some more time on this. So I'm, I'm no for the reasons that Peter stated.
Okay, Olson?
Yes.
And Share.
Oh, I didn't think that would go that way. I'm gonna stay out of it for now. I don't want to get in the way of progress, but I'd like to see changes that better support our students.
Is that a yes, no, or abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. All right, that passes six, one, one. Thank you very much. The next item is the monthly financial and staffing report. I will move that we accept the monthly financial and staffing report. Is there a second for that? Mr. Kelly, thank you. All right, Sean.
Um, okay, this is the report as of the end of January. Our expense year to date is eighty-two point seven million dollars. Or fifty point six percent of our full year budget of one hundred and sixty-three point four. Uh, spending year to year is up by at about a half a million dollars or point six percent. And the, it's driven by, you know, not yet, not yet reimbursed COVID-related expense. Overall salary increases. And higher sped tuition and settlements and partly offset by savings in summer and ESY costs. Transportation. And still having an impact year to year of the pre-spend activity. So that's, uh, on the operating summary, capital, our overall balance is. Currently at twenty-five point eight million dollars, which is down seven hundred thousand from last month. Uh, we're down eighteen point seven million dollars. Compared to a year ago, including the addition of our capital appropriation of sixteen point four million dollars this year. On school lunch. Uh, year-to-date revenue for school lunch. Uh, we're at six hundred and fifty-four thousand, which is down year to year by nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Within the total revenue number, cash sales are down by a little over a million, million eighty-seven. And reimbursements are up currently by fifty-eight in the ledger, but there's about six hundred thousand dollars of reimbursements that have not yet been received or booked in munis. Uh, expenses, uh, we're currently at one million, six fifty-one. Uh, which is down year to year by a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Overall, uh, driven by lower salaries and food costs and supply cost. And partly offset by higher transportation costs that for the delivery of the meals. So looking at the, where we are as of January for food services, we're looking at. Right now, we're looking like we're going to fall short on revenue by about one point six million dollars. Uh, we do expect to come in under budget on, on expenses by about eight hundred thousand. Leaving us with, uh, you know, a shortfall in our net of about eight hundred thousand. In the, towards the end of the package, there's a, there's a monthly chart on special ed. Uh, tuition. And as of February eighth, um, we have year-to-date expense and encumbrances on added district placements of three million, six twenty-five. That includes thirty students. Uh, tuition settlements, uh, currently at three million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, six seventy-four. Which is forty-seven students. And we currently have ten pending cases that are estimated at about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So when you add those up, including the pending cases, we're currently looking at a full year number of about seven point five million dollars. Which is about two hundred thousand more, uh, than our projection at the beginning of the year. COVID update. So our, our current COVID spending for purchases is currently at two point five, seven, five million dollars. And we do have an estimate for the twenty-three point eight of FTEs that are COVID-related. At one point eight two zero million. Offsetting that, we've, you know, we have the two grants that we previously reported on adding up to about two million dollars. But just recently, we were informed that Greenwich will be receiving the second round of the SER grant. Uh, to the tune of three million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, which can be used similarly to the SER round one. So with those three grants combined, we're looking at about five point seven million dollars. Which will certainly cover our, our year-to-date spending. For COVID-related expense. Questions?
Mr. Share.
Um, Sean, two, two questions. Have you implemented changes to the transportation network to reduce? Uh, any buses because our ridership is so low?
Uh, I know Anne can probably talk a little bit better than I can, but I know that they were looking at a couple of consolidations. Uh, in the private schools over the last two weeks. Uh, but we have been, uh, looking at consolidating, gaining efficiencies all year long, and we have had some savings.
And, uh, you know how much?
I think it's in the range of about two, three hundred thousand dollars savings this year.
On a total, total transportation budget of?
Uh, about nine point seven, somewhere around there. And we've also had some other savings related to the hybrid Wednesday for the high school. So we're getting savings there.
So let me just repeat that back. You said two to three hundred thousand, so that would put us at. Maybe up to four percent on a nine million dollar budget. We've only been able to figure out how to save for up to four percent. No, that can't be right, is it? Could you please go look at these numbers and come back with more specifics?
On your year-to-date savings on consolidation?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, however, however you do it, I just, I'd rather be dealing with precise numbers rather than. Yep. And the other question is, when we had our special education review the other day in executive session. I can't talk about the details of that. There were, there are expenses in special education. That are increased this year as a result of COVID. Have those been moved out of the special education budget and into the COVID budget so that they're paid for? Uh, discreetly by the town, either whether they get a grant or they don't.
We still have to go through them. I, I do know about twenty thousand dollars worth in one particular case. We'd have to look to see, working with Mary to see if there are any other COVID-related.
I think, I, I, I think the presentation we had tonight about community connections. And I know that in some of these things where we have to do to provide services to students directly. There were COVID things where we were going from one person to three people to have to support somebody. All that added expense. And I know there was a discussion about a number of those. I think we should take an eye towards all of those where we had to increase staffing. In that six point, and I'm sorry, in that seven point whatever million, there was a lot of situations where we had to increase staffing, which must have been really expensive. I have to imagine that it's way more than twenty thousand on a seven point five million dollar budget. I think we have to go find those and which, hold on, we have to find those and well, we're prescribing the program. So we have to find those, put numbers to them. And make sure that the COVID, because all that's related to COVID. That we're getting our money back from the BET for COVID expenses. I would hate to see us have to fund COVID. I think I said this before. It was obvious to me that we were funding COVID. In our right increases in our regular special education budget. And we got to go get that money back out of the COVID budget from the town of Greenwich. Okay, well, we're gonna. Thank you.
Tony or Anne, do you want to address the, the consolidation of bus routes for private school? Because that's come up now.
Or do you want me to, Anne?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, so we have been working on consolidating the routes. That's public school and private. With the bus consultant that's been working with us for the last two and a half years. Um, and this is part of a planned consolidation of routes that private schools knew about before the year started. We also do have one or two routes that are actually public school, um, in, in this consolidation that's happening right now. Um, and so it's, it's a matter of trying to look at the pre-COVID numbers so that when we consolidate a route. We're not going based on what's happening in COVID where we are socially distancing on the buses because the buses have to run very light right now. For those families that are, that rely on that transportation and because we can't cohort, obviously on a bus. But we're going through those consolidations right now and those have taken place. Where we are looking for route efficiency. And that's public and private.
Just to add to that, I know you mentioned this morning when we, we were talking to the BET. Or maybe you mentioned it on Friday. I don't know. It's all burned together now. Um, that some of those buses had two or three students on them and that's ninety thousand dollars a bus. So. Uh, efficiency seems to make a whole lot of sense to me. Ms. Kowalski.
Thanks, Peter. So I have a question regarding, um, the deficit related to the school lunches. Does this count? Uh, account for any of the potential federal funds that we can get because of, you know, the, the national school free lunch program that some of. That we can qualify for?
Question, um, the, the funds that we've received so far, we can use. Uh, to the extent that there is COVID-related, uh, spending. Uh, but as far as the loss of revenue, we would not be able to use the funds to cover loss of revenue.
So, but when we're not in COVID, right there. Certain. Certain children qualify for free lunches, if, if I understand the program correctly.
And we're getting reverse for that.
We are getting, how do we differentiate that? Um, when we're giving it every kid a free lunch at the moment?
And you know the details of how, how it differentiates between regular free and reduced versus everybody on free?
So. Am I it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
So uh, everybody gets a free lunch on that and a free breakfast because we applied for that particular grant for the national school lunch program. It actually is the summer feeding program which started because of COVID. So that's something that the federal government has done. We applied for it and we were accepted. So that's that reimbursement that we get from the state. Um, every month, so that's our, our income that's offsetting some of our costs in the food services. Um, budget, so that's, that's a good thing. The only thing that the COVID expenses may be able to cover may be, and we're not sure because of the federal um support that they're giving us. Would be the busing for the that we have, but that would be the only thing so.
I I think the busing would be covered.
I think it would be too, but we're still checking with the with the with the feds for that program to make sure that that is uh reimbursable cost.
I mean, the 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 busing attributed to delivering food to those children that are in the remote school.
All through the summer, we fed our.
All through the summer, right, okay.
Under the eight, eighteen and under.
Okay, so essentially the 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 money that we're bringing in still leaves us and providing. Essentially a reduced or free lunch that we're getting paid for or compensated by the the grants, it still leaves us at a deficit of point eight.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Downey?
Um, I know it's late, so let me be quick. Um, Sean, and I may have, we may have asked these before, so I apologize. Um, on the general fund revenue, we have lower um out-of-district tuition income. And preschool tuition income. Are those the numbers that are in the last column, the actual, those are going to be projected for the year or those are just year-to-date?
Those are year-to-date.
Okay, so we may get to those numbers or?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Um, then on the staffing, there was a something mentioned about a custodial temp. Or I know Dan during our budget call the other day mentioned a real need for custodial help. So I don't know if one temp is enough or.
Well, we we did, we did try to get some flex uh full-time flex custodial uh help, but uh we were. Uh, it was not approved and uh the suggestion was that we go for permanent part-time. But uh, we had been doing that. In fact, at the beginning of the year, we were looking to hire thirteen. You know, part-time people and we were successful in only getting a couple.
Okay, when you say wait, I'm sorry, you said we were turned down?
Yeah, we had, we had formally requested to uh, to the B E T to uh, to allow us to hire two full-time. Uh, custodians. Because we, you know, when someone is out sick or on leave of absence, we're, we're, we're having to fill those possessions with overtime. So our overtime costs are uh, you know, pretty high. So we felt that we could self-fund or mostly self-fund the cost of the two full-time custodians with reductions in in overtime.
And then, okay, so so hence you're doing it with temps or part-time rather?
Yeah, I mean, we we have to revisit the uh, the the request again, I think, because the need is still there.
Okay, that's fine, because Dan had mentioned it the other day. Okay, that, those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to uh take a vote on the motion to approve the monthly financial and staffing report. Bernstein is a yes, Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher.
Yes.
Okay, and there's, there's two transfers that uh.
Hang on, Sean, we gotta make a motion to put it on the table. It's an action item, but I, I appreciate you're trying to move us out of here. I'll move that we accept the budget transfers. Is there a second for that? All right, Ms. Stowe, I see you. Go ahead, Sean.
Okay, there were two budget transfers. If you look in the what was posted, there was a, a file with two transfers and then there was a second file. The second file needs to be deleted so that what, that shouldn't have been posted. Um, but there is, the first transfer is a sixty, sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred transfer from language arts, professional learning and substitutes. Expense to cover uh needs in for uh teaching supplies. And the second one is an eighteen thousand, five hundred dollar transfer in social studies. Uh, from software to teaching supplies and the software are subscriptions. Uh. Uh, that were determined to be redundant and could be eliminated. I think the expiration date of the subscription was, I think, January thirty-first. So a decision was made to eliminate those redundant ones. And that saved some money. And then there was also another subscription or online textbook that came in. Uh, came in with a lower cost than budgeted.
Thank you for uh for that, and I appreciate you going back and adding in the uh, the details. I I know that uh, that was a document you need to do uh, to update. Um, I I guess the learning, Sean, and I want to make sure I understand this is, we zeroed out a lot of uh, of learning supplies last year in order to get to uh, to the zero percent increase. Is this the result of that?
Um. I I suspect it's related. I mean, I don't have a definitive answer on that as to why. Uh, if if the supplies were pre-spent in uh, in June of last year, why, why we need additional supplies? Yeah, I guess it could be that there was just not enough budgeted to begin with.
Right, well, that's a possibility, or I know in the case of, you know, art, each kid now has their own uh dedicated package of crayons and science. They've got their own lab. You know, glasses and and set up, so just, just a different circumstance. All right, Mr. Cher.
Yeah, I don't understand that answer, Sean, because we pre-ordered two, two million dollars. And I think I I asked that question at the time and you said, yep, we got it all covered. We ordered everything we anticipated needing and ordering. And we ordered, we got all the P O's in. I mean, that was your answer at the time, so. Can you please dig into this and I'd really like to know why this is happening because. We or, you know, we went through that whole drill of of dragging that two million dollars worth of expense. Into the year and, you know, you guys talked about, you know, how difficult it was in that short period of time to get all those P O's out. So I'd really like to understand what the delta is here.
Okay.
It's um, it it, and by the way, if it's something we didn't anticipate and it's COVID, it's because of COVID yet again. It's a COVID expense and it should be in the COVID budget. It's not, it shouldn't be coming out of our op- our regular operating budget.
If it was, if it was COVID-related, they would have highlighted it as COVID and.
Okay. We would have. I mean, I was just referring to Peter Bernstein's question about crayons. Right?
Yeah, right.
If I have to have more crayon packs that I didn't anticipate because of COVID, that's got to come out of the COVID budget.
That would have been charged to the COVID account.
Yeah, not with this kind of transfer.
Yeah.
Right.
But, you know, generally speaking, yes, we did, you know, do the pre-spend and uh, but in, I don't, I don't have the details as to this specific. What's that?
If you could follow up, that would be great.
Okay, terrific.
Ms. Hirsch?
Um, while others are looking at uh, at the items we needed to purchase and the teaching supplies. I'm more focused on the professional learning that we've uh foregone at forty, you know, for forty-two thousand. I understand why you don't need the substitutes if you're not doing the. Professional learning, but I'm more curious, and I know you probably won't have the answer tonight, to know what professional learning we've pushed, pushed to the side uh to purchase more supplies.
Yep, I'll, I'll get the answer to that as well.
Actually, Sean, I think it was on the original document and I think somebody, somebody may have edited it for brevity, but my recollection is. That it was travel expenses for professional development because people aren't going to conferences. But you, you can, you can verify that, but I'm pretty sure that's what was there before it, before it got edited and updated.
Yep.
All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and take a vote on the uh budget transfers and uh Sean said we're only voting on the actual transfers, not that other page which is going to get deleted. Uh, so Bernstein is a yes, Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher.
Yes.
You, that passes unanimously. Uh, agenda plan, just to uh let everybody know, our next meeting is a retreat. Uh, who there should hopefully have the uh, the Lincoln data. Um, strategic plan, Peter, I've got, I've got time for you there. And uh.
Yeah, and I, as I said the other day, just as a, uh, last time we talked about that, I think the, what's labeled there, I mean, I realize we have the placeholder. And what, but what the label there is, is uh, the description is not correct, but but Peter, I'll send you a second.
Yeah, if you, if you do that, we'll get that updated at the uh, the next chair meeting. Um, and then uh, you know, if there's any updates we need on uh, on the buildings, obviously, we'll go ahead and add that uh, at the earliest meeting. All right, with that, Mr. Kelly, do you have a motion you wanted to make?
Uh, yes, as a matter of fact, I do. I would like to adjourn.
I'm gonna second that motion uh, and seeing no debate on that. Bernstein's a yes, Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
You don't want to leave? Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you to the twenty-one people that brave this out to the end. All right, everybody, uh, be careful in the snow in the morning. Tony, got anything you want to tell us?
No, because I've been in meetings all day. I thought, what's the weather?
All right, well, good luck on your call with the uh police and the D P W and the weather folks in the morning. All right, have a good night. Stay safe.
All right.